Boston zoning vote of appeal hearing for August 10th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2021. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meeting, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require it. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, if you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide comments. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant case is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. And once you've put your comments into the record, please lower your hand so we can clear the deck for others who are interested in commenting or for the next case. Before we start, let me take a call off board members. Um, Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Erlich.
Here.
Good morning, Mr. Regirio.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Donk.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Barazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. I think this sets the record. This is the first time we've had a primarily female board. This is exciting.
Absolutely.
So, um, is Jeff Hampton here from the VPDA?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of January 26th of 2021 and February 2nd of 2021. We need a motion.
No, approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just a reminder, when you make a motion, please put your name on the record and if you second, please put your name on the record. If you are opposed, also put your name on the record. Thank you.
I'm going to call the first order for the extensions to 9:30. Calling BOA 746-305, 4 to 8, Tylestone Street. Madam Chair, this did expire July 13th of 2021. This would be their second extension if we grant it. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert should be here. Robert Burke?
He has his hand raised. He had his hand raised.
Robert, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Robert Burke, 4 and Tylestone Street, Park Knott.
Mr. Burke, can you speak up? Can you speak up and tell us why you're requesting an extension?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, all building plans are committed to the plan examiner and the project is now sitting on the depth of the plan examiner, so we're...
Okay, hold on, hold on. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Approve.
Go ahead.
Joe, motion for a one-year extension.
Second. Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 827-500-72-BURBANK-SCHOOL. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on August 30th of 2021. This would be their first extension if we grant it. Name and address for the record, please.
Sunit Paul John, Fenby CDC, 70 Burbank Street, Boston 02115.
So tell us why you're requesting this extension?
Yes, Madam Chair. We, the Fenby CDC, Fenby Community Development Corporation appeared the property last month and we planned to develop that. So we didn't have enough chance to go and get the extension drawings ready and get the permit, so...
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension, Joe.
Second, Mark.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 826-724, 1199 to 1203 Blue Hill Avenue. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on August 31st of 2021. If we grant it, it would be their second extension. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Murray Glazer, 28th Liberty Pole Road, Hingham, Massachusetts.
So tell us why you're requesting the second extension?
Well, after a grueling year of community meetings that resulted in the extension last, at this time, last year, we began the process of developing the project. But then COVID hit and we needed to, we needed to go into the pre-construction phase because of the community meetings resulted in a complete change in the number of units and...
So has this, has this board seen the change in the number of units?
Um, I believe so.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
But it required a complete, a complete revision of the layouts of the building. And so we started, but, but the pandemic at the time in the summer of last year was...
Hold on. Tom, are you on? Mr. Bloom, Attorney Bloom? I just want to make sure that we're going to hold this for a minute to give you a chance to check because we just need to make sure that any changes, substantive changes have been seen by this board.
Madam Chair, I'll look at the...
Okay, let's go to the next case.
Sure. Calling the next case, calling BOA 785-1286, Princeton Street. Madam Chair, this is, this expired on February 16th of 2020. Uh, this would be their first extension if we do grant it. Name and address for the record, please.
Salvatore Latina, 81 Princeton Street, Boston, Mass.
So Mr. Latina, Mr. Latina, sorry. This, this application expired already. It expired before the pandemic hit. So I'm not sure you're covered by any, any extension rules that have been allowed because of the pandemic. What took you so long to get back to us?
Besides this construction, I went through a family court proceeding to allow the building to be properly transferred to my name. And because of this construction, the Zoom meetings and everything, it just, it just took longer to schedule and to resolve.
So this, this, this has not entered construction because of it being in court? Is that what it is?
Basically, yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion? Please know that we do not look kindly on expired projects except if they've been in litigation. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is from today.
Yes.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 667-111, 151 Liverpool Street. Madam Chair, this is going to expire on August 25th of 2021. If we do grant it, this would be their third extension. Name and address for the record, please. Is Liverpool Street on?
Anthony, yes? I saw that name. Yeah, okay. Anthony, you've been unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you for muting me. Uh, my name is Anthony Lachacy with the law firm of Croketis and Bluestein in Boston, 600 Atlantic Avenue, representing City Point Liverpool LLC on this project. This has been quite the saga with new hurdles seemingly at every turn. The primary reason for the recent delay was due to an issue involving the location of an electrical transformer that is required for this building. It was originally planned to be located in the basement, a room in the basement. As part of the design review process, the VPDA objected to that location and it took some time to coordinate the agency with the Eversource to find a solution, which ended up being putting the transformer in an underground vault outside the building, which required a slight change in the footprint of the building, which because the building occupied the entire lot, that changed the...
So, so counselor, just to let you know, we are looking to have these buildings wrapped up and not just sit there with their approvals in hand. When were you approved on this?
May of 2017.
Okay, so we are expecting that this is the last time we'll hear from you on this project and things will proceed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension from date of termination. Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 955-733, 95 Prescott Street. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on August 2nd of 2021. Could be their first extension if we do grant it.
Good morning. Celestra Bearau-Uitt, representing LAR Properties. Our address is 282 Bennington Street, East Boston.
Okay, hold on, hold on a moment. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 901-824-23BLAKESTREET. Madam Chair, this did expire on May 10th of 2021. This would be their first extension if we do grant it. Name and address for the record, please.
And Rajkeshakumar, 23 Blake Street.
May I have a motion on this? Because these, these last two seem to be COVID-related. So may I have a motion on this?
Motion for a one-year extension, Mark.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and just to know, Mr. Krishnakumar, is that we do not like to have extensions sitting too long out there, so please make sure you proceed with your, with your project.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 788-662-587, Albany Street. Madam Chair, this is due to expire on August 23rd of 2021. Could be their second extension if we grant it today. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matt Eckler from Drago and Toscano, 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the applicant. We are seeking a one-year extension on this matter. As mentioned, this would be our second extension. However, this matter's been in litigation since the board first approved the project back in 2018 and therefore we're seeking an extension since we haven't been able to pursue our full permits.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension, Mark.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Tom has gone back, Tom Broome has gone back in regards to Princeton Street, so the floor says...
Madam Chair, this was in regards to, I think, Blue Hill Avenue.
I'm sorry, but Blue Hill Avenue.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I looked into the document or the plant review history. It doesn't appear that there's been a interview by ISD since 2018. But if the board did want to grant the extension, they would, they would need to go back potentially before the board again and the plans have significantly changed prior to the permit issuing. The extension wouldn't automatically, you know, allow the permit to issue, but it would just allow it to continue the process under the same permit number.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension, Mark.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And to the applicant for Blue Hill, if there have been significant changes, we expect to see you back on the board.
Thank you.
Calling Board Final Order, calling BOA 106-6920, 532 to 534 East Third Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, the purpose of this hearing is to perfect the record with respect to the plan set. This matter was approved by the board on October 6th, 2020. It was later noted by the ISD Plans Examiner that the plans displayed on that day were not the updated set that had been submitted prior to the hearing. Both the Plans Examiner and I subsequently reviewed the video of the October 6th hearing and concurred that my description of the project and all relevant zoning matters was accurate and in conformance with the operative plan set, which is available for display today. These revised plans depict two changes from the initial application set. On the site plan, the number of parking spaces was reduced from six to five, which I stipulated during the original hearing. Also, the partial fourth story of the building now has front and rear setbacks from the building edge of 12 feet and 14 feet, whereas the previous version of the plans showed 14 feet 8 inches and 16 feet 4 inches. The plan set has a...
Miss, hold on. Mr. Barazza, do you have a copy of these plans?
You're on, Ms. Barazza?
My apologies, Madam Chair. I don't have plans for 532 and 534 East Third Street.
Okay, let's bring this back to the board next time so that the architect has a chance to make sure that everything lines up and can stamp the plans.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Jean.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, this is George Morancey. Can I just have clarification on what the, what the motion about was?
Uh, that we need revised, we need plans. Our architect today does not have the plans, so we just need to make sure that we are adequately armed when we make a decision. Okay, so...
Be August 20, August 24th, Madam Chair.
Okay, 8/24 at 9:30.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-4698, 512 to 514, Parkland Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Bogini with the business address of 10 Fourth Road in Braintree. And I'm here today more, seeking more of a clarification. This proposal was approved back on July 21st, 2020. At the time of the approval, the motions were approved to be, approved with BPA Design Review. It was the motion and that was what passed. There was some conversation afterwards which stated to eliminating the garage to lower the height. The, one of the problems with this project was the width of this property is 40 feet, which is consistent with all the neighboring parcels of land. So when we went through the BPA Design Review, it was impossible without creating parking in front of the house because there wasn't enough side yard to have a driveway to go into the back. So we did try to do that and we were, based upon the comments that were received after the vote, able to lower the building to 33 feet to be compliant with the height restriction.
So you're here because you've met the height restriction. However, you are still, you need a clarification or approval from us for the parking?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Ms. Barazza, do you have the updated plans?
Madam Chair, I do not have the updated plans.
Okay, we will then have a motion for deferral. And so may I have a motion for deferral?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
They have a date of August 24th at 9:30.
See you then, Mr. Bogini.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, the G Card. Calling BOA 121-064-439, Appleton Street. This is to excavate the new basement below seven feet above the Boston City Base of finished garden level. The violation is Article 32, Section 4. This is G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. The appropriate documents, the approved plan, the compliance letter from Water and Sewer has been filed along with the engineer's whole harmless letter.
So may I, Christian, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both the DWSC approval and no harm letters.
So Christian, I have a, I have a question for you. Among the comments that were submitted was the concern from an butter on the, on the possible demise of a shade tree. And so are we, are we going to lose something while we have this G Card requirement met?
Not to my knowledge, no. The no harm letter specifically states that anything below the threshold of elevation eight, which is the new zoning, will be fully waterproof. Then it's the insulation of recharge system. So I can't see how that's going to jeopardize a tree, you know, with the insulation. We have these all the time.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings for deferrals or withdrawals only. This is the 9:30 deferrals or withdrawals address, please. I don't think we have any.
There is a hand raise. Let me just check what, Shelley? Shelley, are you requesting a...
I'm sorry, I couldn't even get unmute. But on the 39 Appleton Street one, the, we just want to underscore the butters. So we want to understand what exactly we're doing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll connect with you after this. I'll send you a message now.
Excuse me. Hi, this is David.
Can I have everybody muted? And let's start with the hearings, Mr. Fortune, please?
Following the first case, calling BOA 121-5340, 96 B2 Road. This is to renovate the interior and exterior of an existing two-family dwelling and extend living space into the attic area. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction and extension of a non-conforming building. Article 53, Section 56, Ostrich parking. Article 27C-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. And Article 53, Section 9, insufficient ryanon setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, with a business address at 51 Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. With me today on the call is Devin Riley-Marini from Shoe and Associates Architectural Firm. And she can answer any questions about the plans. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking to renovate the interior and exterior of an existing two-family dwelling and extend living space into the attic area. Zoning subdivision is a 1F 5,000. Our lot size is 2,500 square. The violations are as follow. FAR, required FAR is 0.5. Existing FAR is 0.6 and we are proposing 0.8. Building height, required building height is 35 feet, two and a half stories. We have these stories and we are at 33 feet, 7 inches. So we're, with regard to the height of the building, are below the required height. Side yard setback requirement is 12 feet. On the left-hand side, we have 1.3, which is, and on the right side, we have 10.5. Those are pre-existing non-conforming conditions. With regard to the rear yard, Madam Chair, the requirement is 40 feet. We have 33 and a half. Again, that's pre-existing non-conform as the footprint of the building is not changing. With regard to the units themselves, unit one will consist of two bedrooms, one bath, and is approximately 1,260 square feet. And unit two consists of three bedrooms, two baths, approximately 2,200. We have two parking spaces in the rear. And that's about it. We'll, we'll answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
So it seems like there might be some confusion in the community. This is all internal rehab. There's not any proposed addition to the rear of the building or anything?
I think we're squaring off the back of the building. Devin, if you're on, could you just talk to that point?
We're squaring off the rear of the building and squaring off the attic a bit, but we are not changing the footprint of the building at all.
So, so tell us what squaring off the rear means?
So if, if you were to go back to the existing plans, there's, it's a bit jagged in the back. See, I mean, hold on a second. Up to the plans, please. Right here. See where, there's two baths on where it says unit two on the left-hand side drawing. We are just squaring off that back to make for one face.
And how many square feet is that?
I am not exactly sure how much the addition is exactly.
Okay, so if I, if I'm looking at this left-hand drawing, the dash line all the way in the rear is what the extension looks like, right?
No, no, no. That is the demolition line. Where we are basically, that rear, the, where it says bath and bath, that line back there is, is being extended to each side of the building. And just squaring off those two corners.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate. It seems like you, by squaring off, you are adding an additional kind of story in the existing first floor footprint. Is that correct?
The first floor footprint is staying the same. The second floor and the attic floor are extended.
Are you ever, are you ever building an additional story at the rear? Because your elevations, your A202 and A203 suggests that you're adding another story.
It's the same height. We're keeping the existing height. We're just building out that level.
So you're extending back?
Only on those two floors. The footprint isn't changing, so the setback isn't changing.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. The Office of Neighborhood Services held a two-hour meeting for this project towards the applicant at the severance of the concerns of the abutters. And this project also received support from Orient Heights Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of opposition. The opposition is the outside exterior work, not the interior.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands to the proposal. I'm sorry, there is a caller, one second. Caller 22, you've been unmuted. Are you here to speak in support or opposition for this proposal?
Yes, hello, this is Gail Miller. I'm calling in for the abutters. There's one, the, one of the board members just said there's one letter of opposition. That involves about five or six abutters. And there's some kind of real confusion here. When we had all the verbal conversations with the attorney, at no time was the external renovation discussed. The abutters are all okay with the internal renovation. But what is happening, as the chairman has, chairwoman has illuminated, the abutter, rather the developer, is going to square off a big box in the back. Yes, the footprint is going to stay the same, but you're going to have a big box-like effect, totally out of range of the iPod consideration. And it's going to look like you're looking at the backside of a Walmart building, totally opposed by the abutters as was communicated. And the all communications with attorney Small were only about interior. And then when they went to present to the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, none of that was made known by the attorney about the abutters.
Hold on, ma'am. Can I just ask you a question? So are you opposed to the rear for the way it looks? In other words, you know, if it was, it had additional windows in there or something like that? Is that, will, how does that feel from a neighborhood perspective? Because I hear your concern about looking at a blank wall. So the question is, are you essentially opposed to the addition? Or does it make sense for it to have a different look to it?
One second. Sunlight to the neighbor.
I'm sorry.
Am I still unmuted?
No, you're not.
Yeah, yeah, the opposition is to the entire buildout of the backside. It's just box-like. It totally goes against the grain of the iPod and the character of the other homes in the neighborhoods. They're all one and two families. It just seeks to, you know, expand more living space. And it will severely impact the sunlight on the abutting neighbor on the two. So they will, they will be, their side views will be totally in darkness where they now appreciate a lot of sunlight. So yeah, overall, it's just a total, total opposition to the backside.
Okay. Okay, so thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, this is Barazza. I'd like to put forth a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on Neil Rawmassing at the rear and special attention to the roof line.
Is there a second?
Second, Jean.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. And Mr. Small, please make sure you're continuing to work with the neighbors.
Following the next case, calling BOA 110-3476, 156 Webster Street. This is Garden Unit 4, change of argument from three dwelling units to four dwelling units. The violation is Article 27T-9, this is in East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 57. The Dimensional Regulation, side yard in certain narrow lots. Article 53, Section 8. Basement apartment is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, lot area for additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, use of open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the location of the main entrance, dwelling shall face the front lot line. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking design interoperability tandem parking is not permitted. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Dagnio, 40 Average Street, East Boston.
So tell us what's being proposed?
It's a pre-existing non-conforming apartment that's in this basement, i.e. garden level. That's the perfect slide. Thank you. The utility room had used to be spread out through the unit. The work, as the permit will indicate later, was to put that utility room to the back where the electrician and plumber renewed everything. There are five meters, one for a public, four for each unit. And there are also four gas meters that...
So, Aaron?
Yes?
Are you the same Aaron who made your debut 20 years ago with those prefab units?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
You are, okay, okay. I wanted to make sure. So yeah, we've both sat on this board and appeared at this board often enough. Okay, so let's just go back to this. Tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is and tell us what the floor-to-sill height is.
Seven foot six floor-to-ceiling. I did not measure floor-to-sill. In the front, I would approximate five and a half feet. In the rear, approximately five feet, maybe a little bit less to the sill. There's a grade that slightly tilts towards the back.
Okay, and tell us about egress to this, to this space?
Sure, and there are slides for this. There are three ways to egress this unit. So the primary is up the front steps and then in the foyer of the front hallway down into the unit, which there's a picture of those stairs. Then in the rear, there are two ways out. One is a staircase up through to the common hallway for all units and a separate one, which was actually notated on the permit. The inspector wanted into the utility room and then a small staircase up and out of a short height door, approximately 38-inch tall door. And there are pictures of those slides.
Okay, and what's the proposed square foot of this unit?
The proposed square feet is 500 feet.
580 square feet for a studio? I noticed there's a sump pump in there. Is there any flooding in that space?
We do not have a water issue. No, the sump pump is entirely preventative and planning oriented.
Okay, Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are okay.
So I'm trying to figure out if this is a basement unit or a basement, basin, basement in the classic sense or not. Can you help me with that, Ms. Barazza?
So this is literally an apartment unit. And my concern is that the height is seven foot two and is not to code. Usually you need seven foot six for three-family.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Are there any elevations that show the relationship of the floor to the grade?
Yes, so I'm looking, there are no elevations, but I'm looking on Google Earth. And currently, you can't really egress out from the window, but there are two means of egress as the, as the representative is stating. There's two means to egress, so I'm not so worried about that. The grade is very high. My concern again is that it's an apartment unit and it doesn't have the adequate ceiling height for three-family.
Right, seven six is code.
You're out of time.
But just, one of the, I'm less concerned, my question had less to do with the egress than it did with the amount of light coming in and how far below grade it was.
Right, so based on, there's no elevations, but based on the Google Earth, the street view, there is adequate light, I would say, from two windows at the front.
Can the applicant answer that question? What is the height from floor to, well, first of all, what are you going to do about the problem with the overall height? And secondly, what will be the height from the, if you're going down in order to accomplish seven foot six, then it's even further below grade. So my question is, what will the ultimate height, the elevation be from, from floor to grade?
So I didn't measure to the sill, but I would approximate that it's five foot up front.
Oh, no, no, not to sill, to the outside grade.
Okay, got it. Sorry for misunderstanding that. So my measurement approximation is to the grade. The windows in the front, I'd like to continue down the side to add more light. There's an entire driveway on the left side of this property. And I'd be happy to get elevations and work with any design review team to incorporate more light. As to the height, there are a few adaptations I could do within the unit, but not many without going down as a reference to achieve seven foot six. There are higher points throughout that unit. Seven two, I misspoke earlier when I said seven six. Seven two is a low point in the unit's ceiling height.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, secretary here. Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this. I'm going to put it in for the record regarding 156 Webster Street. He says remove one space, the space nearest to the common passageway.
Okay.
So I just want to be clear on something. This isn't a walkout, right? Like you can't walk right in and outside. You've got to go upstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Benetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council remains at the discretion of the board in this project. The council asks that the petitioner address community concerns regarding property maintenance. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands to the proposal.
So a question to the applicant. Is there, is, tell us about the maintenance.
We have a team, full-time, out of a warehouse on Geneva Street, which is only a few blocks away. We manage the real estate, among several other pieces of real estate on the block, through a software program called AppFolio, where everything's in a highly accountable forum. I'm welcoming any input on that front. I could work with, with any of the aforementioned people that spoke to get specific details and addresses. I would mention, I have adopted this block from Webster Street to Samuel Adams School.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward. This is Barazza, motion to approve without a building code violation for height.
So no code relief regardless because we don't know what the floor-to-sill height is?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? There is no second, so may I have another motion?
I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, sir, it's been denied without prejudice.
Thank you for your time.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 116-0527, 19 to 21 Lancaster Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 116-0297, 73 to 75 Causeway Street, and BOA 116-0299, 31 to 39 Lancaster Street. Madam Chair, would you like to do these one at a time? Or would you like me to call three violations and purpose into the record?
Yes, let's do them together.
Very good. This is for 19 to 21 Lancaster. The applicant seeks to continue to use premises for an open-air public lot for a fee for a capacity of 13 spaces beyond the existing expiration date of December 31st, 2021. This is also in conjunction with adjourned premises in 73, 75 Causeway and 31, 39 Lancaster. The violation is Article 6, Section, Section 03A. Relief is required and additional conditions to restrict parking district. This is for 73, 75. The applicant seeks to continue to use premises for open-air parking lot for a fee for a capacity of two handicap parking spaces beyond the expiration date of December 31st, 2021. The violation is Article 6, Section 03A. Additional conditions and restricted parking district. And then 31, 39 Lancaster Street. The applicant seeks to continue to use premises for open-air parking for a fee for a capacity of 31 spaces beyond the existing expiration date of December 31st, 2021. The name violation, Article 6, Section 03A. Additional conditions to the restricted parking district. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney David Gottlieb, 3009 Washington Street, Brighton, Massachusetts. I'm here today seeking an extension for the use of premises permit for these three, three locations. They're all located in the Bullfence Triangle neighborhood in the city of Boston. Seeking an extension until December 31st, 2024. And all three properties, the total number of spaces is 50 on the total of the three parcels. In regards to the community outreach, I met with the Downtown North Association. It was a positive meeting and they stated that they were in support of the continued use of the parking lot. In regards to the landscaping and the screening, there is wrought iron fence at 19 to 21 Lancaster Street. There is wrought iron fence at 31 to 39 Lancaster Street. And there's also a planting bed with a large tree at 31 to 39 Lancaster Street. In regards to 73 to 75 Causeway Street, there's also a large planting bed with a wrought iron fence and plantings that are there facing on Causeway Street. So I'm happy to answer any questions for the board regarding the landscaping and the screening and zoning as well as the use. And please let me know if there's any questions.
So I'm trying to understand, so 73 to 75 Causeway is here for the open, the public parking of two handicap spaces. Why does it appear to me that it looks like there are six spaces there? And what is the access to 73, 75?
So 73 to 75 Causeway, Madam Chair, you would enter that through Lancaster Street. So if you wanted to access the parking at 73 to 75 Causeway Street, you would have to go in on Lancaster Street to access that. And there are two entrances on Lancaster Street that one could access the parking on Causeway Street. Causeway Street also includes a large, two large trees and a planting bed and a wrought iron fence. And it's connected to the area on 39 to 39 Lancaster Street. In regards to the 50 total spaces, it's one license under the Boston Transportation Department.
I just want to confirm that what I'm looking at for the 73 to 75 Causeway Street address is in fact two spaces and not six spaces or some other combination?
So I can confirm to you that the, that the number of spaces is accurate, is listed on the plan. In terms of the specifics of the plan, how it's laid out, I'm not a surveyor, Madam Chair. But that the capacity is the same as shown on the plan. If you look at the plan, you can see... If you look at the plan, you can see the capacity.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. I, I'm a little confused too. Are there six spaces or two? Stella gave it an answer.
Those 73 to 75 Causeway Streets, sir, there are, there are two paces, and there are two spaces on the permit that we've sought, and there've all, always been two spaces. I understand the questions regarding the plan. I, I'm, I'm not the surveyor, I apologize.
Okay.
But it's two spaces, and that's what's on the use of premises permit, that's what we've been working off for years.
Very good. Mr. D'Amico has also spoken on this, Madam Chair, so I'm going to put it into the record. Regarding 19, 21 Lancaster, 73 Causeway, and 31 Lancaster, although the three cases above just involve a renewal of the current condition, in the opinion of BTD, requesting removal of each space that involves the movement of vehicles by the tenant, the reason behind the request is based on the issue of when the tenant may not be present, when the driver may not, may want to leave the parking lot, it cannot due to the blockage of his or her space. This is especially concerning when there are little children involved. That's Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, and as I look at the plans, it looks like, um, 31 to, um, 39 Lancaster has those two handicap spaces, number 11 and number 28. It's a number, number 11 and number 28. Um, so it feels like there's a disconnect between the application and what is on the plans. Um, so I'll just leave it out there. In the meantime, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has received support from the West End Civic Association, as well as others in the area, and at this time, we'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support, based on feedback from the neighbors and the West End Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands for this proposal.
So it sounds to me like the motion we need to make, needs to clarify everything here.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, a two-year extension, um, with the proviso that we hold signature, um, until updated, um, an updated plan showing the fifty starts.
Joe, this is Tom. Could I request that you make a motion for deferal instead, to submit updated plans rather than hold signature?
Uh, and, and what is the reason, Tom? Because this is how we've done it, so that we do not have to, um, engage any more time on the agenda. Uh, we can just make sure that, uh, uh, i's are dotted and t's are crossed, because we've heard everything on this case.
Madam Chair, it's a practical consideration, essentially, the board's relief, uh, continues to be valid, and, well, there, there's no, if there's no signature, there, there's no, nothing is running, so their appeals period isn't running, and there's no, uh, like, the, the lady of the permit hasn't picked in, so you're essentially allowing like a, an indefinite extension until the applicant, uh, attends to.
So, um, so we can then request that we receive the plans within, uh, two weeks. Will that, will that take care of the issue?
Oh, that should work, Madam Chair.
That'll work, okay. So, um, so Mr. Gottlieb, you've been in, in front of us, uh, often enough, so what we'd like to do is revise plans. Uh, we need to see clearly on Causeway Street that there are in fact only two handicap spaces, no tandem parking spaces, and that the rest of the, um, the town. It's like, within two weeks. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes.
I didn't hear whether or not Joe put a time limit on these.
Two years.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
And I thank you, I thank you so much for your attention. Um, so I would just have the surveyor, uh, prepare new plans to submit, and I would submit those to the plans examiner, the original plans examiner, or to the board?
Send it to the ISD office, please.
Okay, the ISD Board of Appeal or the plans examiner?
I'm sorry, the Board of Appeal office.
Okay, thanks so much. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
Bye-bye.
This is Tom again, I apologize. We, we didn't, I don't know if Joe had ever attached the two years to his motion. Uh, I think it was.
I, I did.
He did, I heard him.
Yeah. So, and one other question I have, Madam Chair, so we.
Mr. Gottlieb, can you take that up with the staff, okay? Uh, because we do have other items on the agenda.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-40155, Durham Street. This is a renovated kitchen and bathroom, headhouse addition on the roof deck, and extend existing stairwells. Violation, Article 41, Section 5, excessive FAR, Article 16, Section 8, roof structure restrictions, access, Article 41, Section 6, rooftop additions. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Mel Schuman. I live at, uh, and work at 189 Elliott Street in Brookline, Massachusetts. I'm here representing appellants Dwayne LaFevere and John Bisck, who are also here with me today. Uh, also attending are Abigail Kileman, the architect for the project, and Robert LaFond, who's the contractor. The appellants are the owners of the Tuck unit at 5 Durham Street. They have an existing roof deck, but it's currently accessible only by a rickety exterior spiral staircase, which is, uh, is dangerous and becomes even more dangerous as the appellants age. Um, and, uh, so they are seeking to build a penthouse to provide safe access to the roof. To do so, you have heard that various relief is required, including variances for FAR in height, and permission to build a, um, headhouse in a headhouse protection area. Uh, this is located in the St. Petof Protection District, so that automatically requires relief for a conditional use permit.
How, how, how many, hold on, how many units are in this building?
Uh, I believe there are five units in the building.
And this would be?
Actually, four, four units, because there's a double, that's correct, four units in the building, sorry.
Okay, and, uh, and the deck would stay the same?
Correct.
So tell us, tell us about the headhouse. What is, what is anticipated being in the headhouse? Is that an elevator? What is it?
Well, the headhouse has a, uh, stairway which accesses the roof, as well as some additional space. It's only two hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, the height will increase from forty-five to fifty-five, but it is not visible from the street at all. In fact, it's already been reviewed and approved by the St. Petof Architectural Conservation District Commission. Um, the headhouse is in keeping with, with the neighborhood. There are other similar headhouses throughout the neighborhood, including one next door at 3 Durham Street, and one across the street at 10 Durham Street. Um, Dwayne LaFevere, who is one of the appellants, is here to speak a little bit more to it, so let me turn it over to him.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Um, uh, basically, there are three elements to the, it's about half stairway up from the level of our current condo. There's a half bath that's going in behind the stairway, and then the remaining part will be a passageway, essentially between the front deck and the small deck. We're not changing the size of the deck.
So essentially, it's a stairwell, it's a half bath, and a passageway, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Um, that, that rendering makes the headhouse look awfully big.
It does, doesn't it? Because I'm, um, it does, it does.
That's, that's not two hundred square feet, I don't think.
Well, it's adding two hundred and twenty-five gross square feet to the, to the building.
What is the size of that, of that headhouse that is, that's showing on the screen right now? What are the dimensions?
The total, the total space is three hundred and twenty-five square feet. Uh, two hundred and twenty-five would be living space, and then another hundred would be, um, the stairway. Um, our architect, Abigail, is on, if she can clarify?
So, so there's living space there, as well as a stairwell. This is not purely functional as a access?
It's about a half, Mr. Elick, there's a half bath, and, um, and, uh, as represented, a path, a passageway between both decks, though I do find that a little bit confusing, what that means.
It, it states faulty purpose on the plans.
Okay, okay.
It's about three hundred and forty-two square feet, it's a nineteen by eighteen footprint.
Do we have jurisdiction over this, or is this, uh, with the Architectural Commission from St. Petof?
Um, I do think that we can, um, um, we can give our opinion about this. We can just, um, make an opinion or, or decide that it should be smaller, because, um, this, this does sound, given all our history in the neighborhood, rather large. But in the meantime, let's go ahead and see who's here to speak.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I just got a quick question. Uh, on the left-hand side, near the headhouse, what is that reddish, reddish, uh, near the gate, of the grate, or the gates?
Uh, I can answer that. Abigail Kileman, the architect, that is an existing, um, it's, it's a chimney that extends above, yeah, that we won't be, we're not, um, touching the deck or that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and could I add also that, uh, again, it's been approved by the Architectural, uh, Commission, the Landmarks Commission is, is comfortable with the project, and it is, uh, it has been, uh, supported by numerous neighbors, uh, and it is.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, thank you, hold on. Uh, can we go ahead and, and listen, and get testimony either in support or in opposition?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we had an, a butter's meeting for the applicant of 5 Durham Street on June 28th, where there was great support for the project. The applicant also met with the St. Petof Neighborhood Association, which expressed support as well. At this time, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, do we have a hand raised?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a couple of letters of support.
Scott, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Scott Mustard. My wife, Claudia Cuji, and I, and I live across the street from Dwayne and John. Um, we are in full support of this. I'm a commissioner for the CAC for the Back Bay South and Gateway Project, uh, prior president for the St. Petof Neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Can I hear from somebody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Yeah, Joan, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Yep, my name is Joan Carragher. I live at seventeen Cumberland Street. Um, I'm also the president of the St. Petof Neighborhood Association, and, um, and we do want to put forward our support for this project, and I know you're under time constraints, so I won't go any further to say, but, yes, we've looked into it, and we, and the Architecture Review, uh, Committee approved it, and we approve it as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Lorraine, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Lorraine Steele. I live at 3 Durham Street, uh, Boston, Mass, next door to 5 Durham, and my husband Lee Steele is also on the phone. We have been involved in, uh, the reviews of the proposed project, and, under the condition that it is not visible from Durham Street, we're in full support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ambassador. Okay, um, we have, the, the reason that this project comes to the Board of Appeal and doesn't go directly to the Architectural Review Board is, there is a reason for that. And so I would like to get a motion, um, to, on, on the size of this, um, on this, the size of this, uh, headhouse.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review paying special attention to the size of the headhouse.
Oh, we trump landmarks? I don't know if we can. I think you can make a motion to reduce the size, but I don't know if we trump landmarks if they've already approved it.
You know, then, uh, because, you know, it just means that every large thing that comes in, we had just rubber stamped for it, when we have seen other projects that have been much more respective of the neighborhood, or respectful of the neighborhood.
No, I, I completely understand that. Could you send it back to Landmark, the smaller footprint?
Yes, that is exactly what we're gonna do, is, uh, approve it with a reduced, a reduced footprint. And we don't just mean, uh, a nominal reduction, but, um, a, a, a fair amount of reduction. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 121-4293, 276 to 278 Newbury Street. This is a restaurant occupancy to accommodate a requested fit on the ground floor, ground and first floor, a total of forty-six hundred square feet. Violation, Article 8, Section 3, the restaurant is conditional use in the B365 sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Tom Miller from McDermott Quillian Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. Uh, I am joined today by Jamie Vissonett and Mark Curley from the project team. We are here before you today to seek approval for the conditional use permit for the restaurant in the, as the secretary said, in the basement on the first floor of the building located at 276, 278 Newbury Street. Um, it is in the Boston proper zoning districts in the B365 general business sub-district. Um, the restaurant use is conditional in this sub-district. Uh, the appellants, Ken Oringer and Jamie Vissonett, are proposing to convert this former retail space into an Italian restaurant on two floors. Uh, Ken and Jamie are well-known and well-regarded, uh, and very experienced operators. Um, they have worked with their team to design a space that has adequate facilities, taking into considerations complex rates.
So, Tom, can you please tell us, um, forgive me, um, C- Councilor, how many seats are being proposed in this space, and how, and, and, um, because I know when restaurants come in, we want to know seats, we want to know accessibility, and we want to know trash, because people are very concerned about those rear alleyways.
Yes, ma'am, um, and, you know, the, we, uh, so the seating capacity is, uh, one hundred and twenty-eight in, inside, uh, with forty exterior on a private patio, uh, patio on private property. Um, the accessibility, it has been through, uh, and received its permits, so, you know, or at least, uh, for the FIBO and Code Review, um, so it meets the full accessibility standards. Um, I, the trash is stored internally, uh, we went through this with NAV a couple of different ways, uh, to make sure that, you know, the, the trash is stored adequately so it doesn't affect the neighborhood, uh, in any way, shape, or form. It's been designed with the appropriate facilities to make sure that there is no nuisance created.
Thank you. Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Molly Griffin from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and received their non-opposition, as well as with the Back Bay Architectural Commission, or regarding the exterior of the building, and received their approval. So at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, do I have a hand raised? Conrad, are you here to speak in support or opposition for this proposal?
Uh, in support, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Conrad Armstrong from 439 Mac, Marlboro Street, uh, representing Neighborhood Association of Mac, Back Bay, and just confirming that he has the applicant met with us, and, uh, can, uh, subsequent to their, uh, storage of, indoor storage of trash, NAV does not oppose their, uh, application.
Thank you. And Scott Mustard, are you here to speak in support or opposition for this project as well?
I think, I think Scott is here for Durham Street.
I'll say, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Can you just lower your hand? I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on exterior signage.
I think that falls under BBAC.
And we have already been through the BBAC process and had our exterior signage reviewed, and countless tickets are appropriate in this.
So I'd like to just put a, forward a new motion of just approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-3715, 962 to 968 Massachusetts Avenue. This is a chain of arc of a warehouse. This is a change of occupancy warehouse wholesale business office and food processing to retail and add one apartment dwelling unit. Violation Article ninety, Section seven, residential use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, board. Tony Timothy Fraser, PO Box five, one to Mass's business address. Um, on the line with me is Laura Gennaro from Cube Smart, Matt Cole, also from Cube Smart, the, uh, the applicant and design team. The address here is nine-sixty-eight Mass Ave. This is that, uh, just a few doors north of ten-ten Mass Ave. The applicant's seeking approval to form an internal, all internal rehab, uh, to add an accessory apartment dwelling unit for its onsite manager. Uh, the bones to this, and the structure are already in there when the, when the building was converted to storage in the year two thousand. Um, but the applicant, through its conversations with ISD over the years, had been recommended to, to make this, uh, onsite manager's apartment available so that it got twenty-four hour surveillance, especially in this neighborhood.
So, um, Mr. Fraser, tell us what, um, so what is the warehouse use?
The warehouse use now is, is that it is self-storage, it is all self-storage.
So this is the self-storage facility where at some point people were living in those units?
That's correct.
Okay.
In response to that, and conversations with ISD, and so clearing up those violations, although those violations were cleared up otherwise, um, it's been a constant recommendation that they sort of complete the onsite managers apartments, that they can have that twenty-four hour presence.
I see, got it. Uh, so this would be twenty-four hour use?
Yes.
Okay, um, so tell us about that residential unit. Uh, how many square feet?
It's nine-hundred-ninety... Madam Chair, it's nine-hundred-ninety-six square feet. Um, it's one bedroom and a small office, one bathroom, and then sort of a kitchenette and dining area.
Okay, and tell us about the means of egress?
Uh, so, so there's a staircase, um, right, that leads right out of the unit to the ground floor, and that'd be closest to, to Massachusetts Ave.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just have a logistical question, maybe it's just for us, uh, or, can, how do we assure that it's only for the onsite manager in this, uh, I mean, once we approve it for an apartment, it's approved for an apartment?
True.
Right, so, right, so, uh, I don't know if the board wants to add, because in its decision, I know that Cube Smart's internal, uh, policy is to not allow other residents. I mean, it, it's not even a, you know, it's, it's a one-bedroom, it can't be used for anybody else but a Cube Smart. It's usually somebody new.
So it's not somebody's pied-à-terre, it would be just a unit for onsite management?
That's correct.
And to one person, not to, uh, are you expecting, are they expecting rotating, um, staff through it, or is it just one person?
It's just one person.
Okay. Um, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Like to go on record in support of this proposal. And a butters meeting was held on June second, in which the applicant responded to any of the questions or concerns raised by any of the budding neighbors. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEfrain, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to also go on, uh, record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Is, um, somebody here from us, from New Market, is Sue Sullivan on?
I don't see.
I, did we, did we get, um, a comment from, um, from New Market?
No, Madam Chair, I don't see anything. I mean, I can take another quick gander at it. There wasn't any comment made, and, no, there's nothing.
Oh, yeah, and this is, she has, she has comments in for North Hampton Street, but, um, not on this. Did you check in, Mr. Fraser, with, um, uh, with, um, with New Market?
Um, Madam Chair, we went on the recommendation of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services as far as, um, the butters and Neighborhood Association. We did not directly contact, uh, New Market Association.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Do you have exterior securities around, around the unit? Do you have security cameras?
Yes, yes, the, the entire premises is security cameras, and that's one of the functions of our onsite managers, is to monitor the, on a twenty-four hour basis.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a, two proviso. One is that this is for the applicant only, and, uh, to, for the accessory unit to be only for a manage, onsite management use.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm opposed. Madam Chair, thank you.
I'm sorry, who's opposed? Joe, I, thank you?
Yep.
Okay, one opposition, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board.
Calling a next case, calling DOA nine-nine-zero-four-four-zero, one-ninety-five Dudley Street. This is a change of occupancy to add recreational cannabis dispensary to an existing occupancy. Violation Article fifty, Section ten. Cannabis establishment located less than twenty-six, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty feet away from another one is forbidden. Note, this is proposed cannabis use to locate in less than two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty feet from an existing cannabis establishment. Article fifty, Section ten, use conditional, establishment use.
Madam Chair, to please myself.
I'm sorry, uh, who is this?
Jean.
Okay, Jean, for what reason?
Uh, my previous employer owned property on both sides of this establishment.
But you've been gone two years, right?
I've been gone, yes, I've been gone since January twenty-one, so not quite two, twenty-twenty, so not quite two years.
Okay, okay, so for the record, um, Ms., um, Ms. Panado has refused herself.
Okay, I guess she has permission?
So, um, so let me just, uh, for the record, say that this is a six-member board, and the applicant will need five members to be in support. Um, so, um, you have the option of going ahead or deferring?
Uh, Brian Keith is on the line, he's the client, so I will leave that to him. I would recommend we go forward.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna go ahead and proceed.
Okay, so please, everybody who's going to be talking, please put your name and address on the record, and tell us what's being proposed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin Joyce, Dariwa, offices, Boston, for the petition of Rooted In LLC. I advise, uh, Rooted In is also on the call. Today, we have...
Could you tell us, uh, Mr., uh, Council Joyce, can you please tell us who, um, the applicants are on this, uh, representing the, who the applicants are?
It's Brian, Brian Keith, uh, Rooted In, and Sullivan Chowdhury of Rooted In LLC. It's a Massachusetts limited liability company.
Okay, so please go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, we're requesting a buffer zone variance and conditional use permit for a weed junk cannabis establishment and fourteen-hundred square feet of ground floor retail space at one-ninety-five Dudley Street. Operating hours will be Monday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM, and on Sunday, from eleven AM to eight PM. We need the buffer zone variance, because the board has previously approved a cultivation facility within the buffer zone. Cultivation does not include retail. Our, the, our proposal is for a boutique-style retail loan store, and does not in any way include cultivation. And that would be, uh, uh, reasoning why we would request the variance today. All right, Brian Keith, as I said on the line, he's happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Keith, is this your first application for a cannabis facility?
Uh, no, we were with you about two weeks ago, um, for our location on Newbury Street.
Okay, so you know what our questions are? Can you please beat us to the punch and tell us about all the details of what is being proposed here? Because this is, because this is Roxbury doesn't mean that we give it any less of a, of, of, uh, of, of an analysis.
Of course, absolutely. Um, we're proposing, uh, as Kevin said, fifteen-hundred square feet of recreational cannabis. Um, the reason we're here is because there is a growth facility, uh, within the half-mile buffer zone. Um, it's, uh, one-hundred Hampton Street, and, uh, that's what creates the, the required variance. Um, other than that, cannabis is conditional use. That's the other reason we're here, but other than that, um, it's the growth facility. Uh, we've, uh, had a robust community process.
Uh, what, what we wanna know is about the operation of the facility. As you know, when you, when you came in for the application on Newbury Street, we asked about security, we asked about waiting, we asked about all kinds of things, so please give us a, a robust presentation.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, customers will enter on Dudley Street. You'll see that, uh, arrow at the top of the screen. There's a holding area, um, right through there, um, which is partitioned from the main retail space. Um, the main retail space is to the left and top of the screen. Um, they will check out at the bottom of the picture, um, which is the rear of the store, and then they'll exit through a separate door than the door that they entered. So they would enter at the top on Dudley, and they would exit onto Peavier Place, uh, private way. Um, and that's that last arrow at the bottom of the screen. Um, security will be...
Just, so, once again, um, so usually people check in twice. How, what is the double check-in that you're having here?
We'll do a triple check. Um, we'll check IDs at that first arrow. Everywhere, uh, we'll check IDs for a second time in the reception area, which is below the, the arrow in the middle. That's the, the secondary ID check, where we'll be using, uh, Masport-style ID check for verification of identity. That's when they'll be granted access to the retail section of the store. Your third ID check will happen at the rear of the store, uh, prior to, um, accepting product.
Okay, and tell us about your security detail?
Yep, so similar to Newbury Street, uh, Michael Ware and Ware Security, uh, will be, um, I just pulled it up, they will be in charge of all our, all of our security. We'll have, uh, five security personnel on staff at all time. Um, one who's, uh, watching, uh, all the security cameras, uh, three on the floor, one at the front door, and the fifth individual, sorry, two on the floor, one at the front, one at the security camera, and the fifth individual would be a rover who is going between outside and inside, and just keeping, keeping track on everything, relieving people, et cetera. Um, we'll have cameras, uh, about twenty-four cameras on the interior, as well as the exterior of the store. Um, and those cameras will be shared with, uh, Boston Police, uh, live, um, as well as, as, as I mentioned, monitored live.
Okay, and then, what is the anticipation of proposing five security people? Um, how many staff?
Uh, about thirty staff, um, for, for this store, um, at all, not, not, not all at once, of course, but thirty individuals would be on staff approximately. Um, and we have, we've committed to a hiring plan that sees us, uh, eighty percent Boston residents, uh, fifty-one percent people of color, fifty-one percent women, and, uh, fifty percent Roxbury residents.
So fifty-one percent BIPOC, fifty-one percent, um, women?
Correct.
And what's the third one?
And that's including, and that's including, um, management positions as well. And what was that question, I'm sorry?
I, so, okay, so minimum of Roxbury residents is fifty percent. Okay, uh, so you did tell us about the hours of our operation. Will you be taking online sales?
Yes, um, when we begin, uh, when we commence operations, we will be, um, online only to start while we get an understanding of the demand. Um, and then we will, of course, be offering, um, order ahead, um, for anyone who wishes to do so.
Then, um, does this, uh, this development come with parking?
Uh, there are six spots available, um, for us that are, that are onsite, uh, connected to the building. Um, six spots that, there's twelve spots, uh, currently they're all being used by one tenant, um, but, uh, the landlord has given us rights to six of those spots.
And so you're proposing that, so you, you will have six spots, however, at any one time, you will have, um, security and staff? So what is your plan? How are you going to accommodate security, staff, and visitors without creating a, um, a traffic nightmare on a street that's already fairly narrow and, um, has a lot of traffic on it? So tell us, tell us what you're thinking about.
Well, uh, you know, that was one of our main concerns, and it was one of the concerns that we heard as we, uh, spoke and worked with the community, uh, so much so that we retained, uh, two individual, uh, two companies to perform independent traffic studies. Um, those, uh, companies, Howard Stein Hudson, as well as VHB, uh, both came back and said that there would be a minimal, I can't remember the exact technical term that they used, um, but it was basically a negligible impact on the current traffic levels. Additionally, um, the traffic engineers provided us with recommendations, um, which we have taken all of those recommendations and will be implementing. Uh, MBTA passes for all employees, uh, Blue Bike membership for all employees, uh, pre-ordering, as we discussed, using a curb management system to keep the sidewalk clear on Dudley, and we'll also have a real-time transportation screen in the reception area to help people decide which, uh, mode of transportation to choose, as well as on our website.
And if I'm not mistaken, just adding to that, this is Dot Joyce with Rooted in Roxbury. Um, there will be no staff allowed parking onsite. It will be onsite parking only for staff if they choose to drive, which we're hoping to accommodate through other means.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, having been caught in that traffic on Dudley Street far too many times, it's just a nightmare street, uh, and sadly, you know, the spillover is on residential streets or through Orchard. Um, so that, that is really my concern about this. Um, so I still think that you need to look at this far more, more clearly. Um, can you talk about the curb management system that you've listed? Um, here, what does that mean?
Sure, um, what we plan on doing is bringing technology to bear, um, on this, the specific issue that we're talking about. And we've already engaged with a company, uh, by the name of Curb Flow. Um, they, uh, began rolling out their technology in Washington DC, and, uh, they're basically used all over the city, um, uh, by different retailers, and it allows, um, what their cameras basically do is it looks at the street near the location. It can also look at different parking lots. When you combine not just one retailer having it, but multiple retailers using it, then you have basically a network that's looking at all different parts of the city, and where, and the cameras can tell you where there's parking and where there's turnover from parked cars to open spaces. That allows people who do choose to drive a real-time look at the area and a real-time look at where there are parking lots. What we can do with that technology is then place those cameras on public or private buildings, and looking at places like the Blair Lot, which has about ninety spaces, like the Ruggle Street Lot, which has about seventy-five spaces, and all the other different public opportunities and private opportunities for parking in the area, allowing our customers to know where and when there are opportunities around our location.
Okay, because, um, Mr. Keith and Mr. Chowdhury, you both know that all these parking lots that are theoretically open right now have proposed developments on them. Um, so, um, you know, so there is a limited lifespan on the, on those, on that parking availability. Uh, let's see, tell us again about delivery, when is delivery anticipated to occur?
Uh, personally, um, we have an application for delivery, um, in the pipeline right now. Um, I believe right now there may be one operating delivery in Boston, but there could also be none, I'm not currently sure. Um, there are applications available, um, but we anticipate to...
I mean, I mean, sorry, delivery, delivery of... I mean, I mean, sorry, delivery, delivery of product to your store. Uh, sorry, forgive me. I was unclear.
Um, delivery of the product will take place, um, in the morning before, um, activity begins to pick up in Nubian Square. Um, our store will not open until ten AM, um, so we anticipate, um, somewhere between the seven to eight AM, um, ballpark for deliveries. Those deliveries would take place on Peavier Place, uh, the private way and will, so off of the main Dudley Street. Uh, and will go through that side door that we currently use as an exit for customers.
And tell us about, um, any conflicts that might occur with school buses or children walking to, um, walking to school with, with that delivery schedule.
Sure, I mean, well, well, like I said, our deliveries will take place on a private way. Um, and our deliveries would, our delivery vehicles would be able to park in the available parking. So they won't be on Dudley Street and they won't even be blocking the private way, which has, you know, access to vehicular traffic. You know, when we do deliveries, we would be in a parking spot. That's our parking spot. So our deliveries won't block traffic. We won't be double parking and things of that nature.
And who is the owner, who is the owner of this building?
Uh, the owner of the building is a company called Trel Management, uh, owned by Ian Cotrell. He's a local, uh, resident, uh, who lives in Jamaica Plain, I believe.
So Trel. Okay, okay. So whoever has the, or whatever, can you guys mute everybody? Uh, how are the plans?
Uh, one thing that I just wanted to add, because you did ask about young people, you know, one thing that we, just recognizing where we are in Boston, one thing that we're doing that I don't think any other cannabis business in the state is doing is that we've chosen to, uh, close our doors, um, for an hour during the, during the, uh, school day, um, during the school dismissal in Nubian Square. That way, you know, there's really no way to mitigate young people or anyone from walking by our building. Um, but we're doing more and we've actually made it a condition within our host community agreement with the City of Boston that we would close our doors for an hour, um, you know, during this, during the school day, during dismissal.
So you'll be closed.
Yep, and we've, um, we've tied that time, I believe it's, uh, one forty-five PM to two forty-five PM. With, with further discussion with the Boston Cannabis Board as to how we finalize what that time is, but that, right now, that's the time that we're holding to close.
Okay, Mr. Ambassador, can you mute everybody, please?
Yeah, I think everyone's muted except for you, I agree.
My, my, I'm listening, my guest.
Okay, yep. So, um, how are the plans, Mr. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. Is, is, is there another dispensary on Washington Street?
Uh, the Boston Cannabis Board, uh, approved a second dispensary, uh, after, um, our approval took place. So we were the first recreational, um, the second would be on Washington. And then the first cannabis business was the, um, growth facility on Hampton Street. Ultimately, they were the first, but we were the first, uh, recreational.
Is, is somebody here from the Cannabis Board? Um, I'd like to find out which one was approved by the Cannabis Board on Washington Street?
Madam Chair, this is Kathleen Hawkins with the BCB. Uh, there was a, an approval by the BCB for a second establishment, uh, in this area, but this was the initial approval. Rooted in LLC was approved, uh, was voted on and approved prior to the Washington Street location.
And my next question is, how far are you from a school?
Hold on, sir. You know, Ms. Hawkins, what was the address on Washington Street?
I believe, I'm just pulling it up, I believe it's twenty-one seventy-seven, but just give me one second and I can confirm for you. My apologies.
Is this next Simon's Liquor Store?
Yes.
It is, okay, so a couple of weeks ago, we approved that space for, um, what is that school? Um, the school Roxbury Prep. That was the frontage was approved for Roxbury Prep at twenty-one seventy-seven Washington Street.
Uh, uh, sorry, Madam Chair, my mistake. It is twenty-three sixty-three to twenty-three sixty-five Washington Street.
Twenty-four.
Yes.
And what's, what's the Cop Cross Street to that?
It, it's Roxbury Street. It's like right, it's right down. It's, it's less than a quarter mile away from this proposed location.
To be clear, the, the, the dispensary that you're describing is basically next to Silver Slipper. It's next to Bank of America.
It's, it's a Castillo, uh, Colossus project?
Correct, exactly.
Okay, but he hasn't come in on that. Okay.
And then, how close are we to a school? Looks like we're close to STEM or we're close to Boston Evening Academy.
Yep, so we're about, um, uh, door to door, we're about four hundred and fifty feet from, uh, the Day and Evening Academy. And we're about, I would say roughly six hundred feet, again, door to door from, uh, the Dearborn STEM Academy. Uh, there was a rules change at the state level, um, where if there's something called an impassable barrier, um, it's no longer measured door to door. So when you're looking at the map that you're looking at, the, our proximity to the Day and Evening Academy is actually a grassy knoll in the back of their, um, driveway or, or, excuse me, parking lot, which is on top of a ten-foot retaining wall. So what I'm describing is something where, you know, if you went and, and went to that retaining wall, you'd still be looking at the back of our building and you really couldn't see it. So the wisdom of the Cannabis Control Commission, they determined that if there's an impassable barrier between the dispensary and a school, that they would now measure walking distance versus, uh, versus point to point. So in this case, by, by code, uh, we are, uh, a thousand feet from the Day and Evening Academy and about a thousand feet from the, more than a thousand feet from the STEM Academy. And we have, um, we have documentation from a surveyor to back that up, as well as approval that what we, what the surveyor said is approved by the CCC because Leslie Hawkins with the BCB forwarded this information to the Cannabis Control Commission and they approved it.
Okay, so, um, again, uh, so it's entirely dependent on a barrier that's maintained by somebody else. Should that change, uh, Ms. Hawkins, what happens?
Uh, Madam Chair, that's a good question. Uh, this is the first time with this rule change that either the CCC or, uh, the BCB or this board is considering something under the revised, uh, the revised regulations regarding the school buffer zone. I believe that if, uh, because the school is pre-existing, should there be a change that impacts the impassable barrier, then the use would have to be reconsidered. Uh, I think it would be different if the establishment was cited before the, the school, but in, in this case, I believe that the use would have to be revisited, uh, with, with all of the various boards as well as the state. But this is certainly a, a case of first impression as we've never dealt with this before.
And, um, do childcare facilities count about with this buffer zone? I just want to make sure that there are no childcare facilities in proximity?
A- absolutely. So a- as this board is aware, the initial language at the state level that we're legally obligated to apply was much more expansive in what was prohibited within the five hundred foot radius, but it was subsequently amended to a K through twelve existing public or private school offering educational services. And the state has been very specific about that. We've had a number of conversations that childcare facilities, parks, playgrounds, even a gymnasium of a school would not qualify under the language at the state level.
So for example, I'm just randomly asking, if there was a Head Start program, um, the, this facility could be within five hundred feet of a Head Start program then?
Yes, it could. Obviously, with the various boards involved, they could, at the BCB and this board could take into consideration the proximity, but it's not a barrier to entry in terms of going through their due process rate to the, to, uh, to a here.
Um, Mr. Keith, can you tell us if there's any, um, daycare facility in proximity?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. The closest daycare facility that I'm aware of is, uh, Roxbury Roots Montessori, which is on, um, Washington Street near, or connected to, within Bartlett Place.
Between Bartlett, and the one in Orchard is not there anymore?
The one in, if, if there's one in Orchard, uh, that would be further down the stru-, again, I'm, I do not know this for certain. But knowing the areas I do, that would be further within Orchard Gardens, um, closer to, like, Adams, you know, further down the street. I, I can't think of this. Dear, like Dearborn Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, um, a couple of questions. I mean, one, just a comment, the, the, uh, the, all the buffer zone, uh, requirements seem to be a moving target and I remain utterly confused by them. Um, the, the cultivation facility on Hampton Street, is there any, do you know, are there any plans for that at some point to have a retail component?
Uh, not that I know of. Um, that being said, uh, we did submit a letter of support from the owners of the cultivation facility, uh, supporting our project.
And Commissioner, this is lastly from the BCB. We have no application on file nor do we have any indication that they're looking to collegate, uh, recreational facility there as well.
Yeah, the, the final question was just that this additional on Washington Street that was, uh, subsequently approved to, to your application, how, uh, what happened with the buffer zone on that one?
Is that a question for me or for Ms. Hawkins?
I guess for Ms. Hawkins.
Uh, absolutely. So, um, in our rules and regulations for the BCB, we mirrored, mirrored the variance language, um, when we're, when we are evaluating, uh, proposed establishment within a half mile. So in that case, the board found that even with the heightened level of scrutiny, um, that, that the BCB applies when there's an existing establishment. They felt that based on the traffic studies and the, uh, proposals that the neighborhood would not be negatively impacted by two within that, uh, within that location and they found that it was an appropriate site.
That's interesting. Okay, and it really, and how did the bowling building and the fact that there are students that pop in and out there, um, how did that factor in your decision-making and also the fact that in Nubian Station, we see after school, a great number of kids coming in, not only from Madison Park, but from, um, academy up the street. Um, I mean, it's, it's students from everywhere. How did that factor in this, in these decisions, Ms. Hawkins?
Absolutely. So, uh, the, the BCB has very specific criteria that it, it has to evaluate with each application pursuant to the ordinance that created the board. Um, and security is one of those. I believe it's twenty percent of what's considered. And the board looked at what the proposed operations were, what the proposed signage was, what the security was going to be, and they did not feel that this would have a negative impact on the community and they felt that the applicant had adequate protections in place to ensure that there were no, there was no access for individuals underage, nor was there a likelihood of, uh, of product being shared with anyone underage. As, as this board knows, these establishments, should they go through the BCB's process, the ZBA, and then once they go to the CCC, there is a, uh, there, the CCC has very strict requirements in terms of security, uh, ranging from where the bulbs are located to the cameras, to accessibility of the footage. So the board, uh, at its hearing did feel that both this applicant and the subsequent applicant that were heard did not pose, uh, you know, a negative impact on the community and that it was appropriate in time, place, and manner for each of these locations.
So I basically have a, a, a question for you, Mr. Li-, Ms. Hawkins. Um, still want to call you by your old name, but Ms. Hawkins.
Last name, but I appreciate that.
Um, so the question is, we've seen a number of, um, stores, and this is my, my observation, even going back twenty years in Nubian Square, where, um, liquor stores sell, you know, nip bottles. And so there is an issues, not only with, you know, public, public issues of, uh, of inebriation, but also trash. What, what, what processes does this, the commission have in place to ensure that we are not going to see such public consumption in proximity of these stores? And specifically this store?
A- absolutely. So just like on the licensing board side, in addition to being the, kind of citing authority for just like the licensing would do with a, with a package store, the BCB is also the regulatory authority and that's one of the reasons it was so important to have a license besides the state license actually issued from the city, so that if there are issues, that's something that can be suspended, it can be revoked, or it can be conditioned. Uh, we have had a number of applications where the community has said, we would like to see, uh, just, just as the, the example you gave, no nips, we would like to see no single, uh, kind of cannabis cigarette sold. That was not the case with either of these applications, but we've certainly seen that. Um, I can tell you firsthand that the licensed premise unit of the Boston Police Department, along with the chairwoman Kathleen Joyce and myself, have conducted random, uh, inspections of the existing cannabis establishments and we will continue to do so, just like we would a package store or a restaurant. So there is an ongoing regulatory authority over these establishments. And to date, with the six recreational that are operational, we have actually had little to no, uh, little to no issues. The other piece is that as part of their host community agreement, they, uh, each establishment, if approved and operational, has an obligation to provide a three percent of its gross sales to the city. That's an addition to the three percent tax. And those, uh, that money actually goes to any impact specifically from that establishment. So not cannabis or the war on drugs or the failed war on drugs as a whole, but that specific establishment. If there are issues, then there, there is money that's being held by the city to address those in addition to the regulatory oversight.
But it's not, it's not a bond or anything like that that really holds them in, in a, in a very strict fashion to meeting their, uh, requirements and the host community agreements?
It is not a bond. It's actually three percent of their gross revenue taken quarterly, but at the same time, this board has the legal ability to suspend and/or revoke their license to operate at any time.
Okay.
And if I could add, um, if, if the host would move to slide seventeen, um, we actually address exactly what you're referring to. Um, because we want to be good neighbors in the area that cites us. Um, and we want our customers to also be good neighbors because we feel that they're reflexive, reflexive, reflections of us. Um, and as we did on Newbury Street, if someone is publicly consuming, if someone is throwing their box or litter on the ground or double parking or something of that nature, we simply won't, we won't serve them. Um, and, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a benefit to the individual. It's not a right or a guarantee that they can come into our store. And if they're doing things that the community doesn't want to see, then we just would not serve them.
Okay, um, last, last time, um, Mr. Ambassador, can you mute everybody? Um, board members, do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay, we've figured out that the plans are adequate. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? Anybody either in support or in opposition who is on this call? Phone wise or please start raising your hands so we don't have a hiccup as we go through the list.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jason Gannigan from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in a position of non-opposition. The Rooted in Roxbury team understands the importance of building wealth and bringing equity to the cannabis industry and has also created a new community model to help uplift, uplift the surrounding community and business district.
Uh, Jason, we can't hear you. You went mute. Uh, Ms. Ambassador, can you help Jason? We can't, we cannot hear him. Hold on.
Can you hear us? He, he's unmuted, I don't.
There we go.
Okay.
Jason, why don't you start from the beginning, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, sorry. So good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jason Gannigan from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in a position of non-opposition. The Rooted in Roxbury team understands the importance.
The Rooted in Roxbury team understands the importance of building wealth and bringing equity to the cannabis industry, and has also created a community model to help uplift the surrounding community and business district. This applicant has completed the community process and has shown commitment to working with the community to address concerns brought about during that process. On record, I want to bring up some of these concerns, which was the regarding of the impact on parking, concerns regarding nearby students and pedestrian traffic, and lastly, the substance abuse issues happening in the Roxbury community. Thank you.
Madam Chair Secretary here, uh, we have letters of opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have quite a few raised hands. Can I also just note that if you're calling in and you want to speak in support or opposition, press star three if you're calling in. But I'll start with the raised hands. Start with the Pleasant. Um, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, how are you? Good morning. My name is Levette Coney, representing Mount Pleasant Forest and Bine Neighborhood Association, 339 Dudley Street. I would like to preface this testimony by stating that I am an active community leader. Therefore, I am fully aware of the numerous tactics that are being employed in this cannabis project.
Hold on, Ms. Ms. Coney. Um, please, could you don't don't read us a letter, just tell us bullet points. To everybody who's on this call.
It's very short. It's very short. Just two major points.
We we better process bullet points than than long letters, okay? So please go ahead.
Okay, so I recognize that this hearing is focused on zoning, but I must testify on record that this proponent has used unethical, deceptive, and unfair practices to get to this point. Those who are in support of this application stand to profit in some form or fashion. So the community, which includes Orchard Gardens uh Neighborhood Organization, Roxbury Council uh Neighborhood Council, Roxbury United Neighborhoods, Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association, Mount Pleasant Forest, and Bine Neighborhood Association, which one of the applicants live, Tommy's Rock, Nubian Square Coalition, and uh many residents within all of those catchment areas are adamantly opposed to this location due to the numerous factors, due to numerous factors. They are not being neighbors when they force themselves on our community. So there is also a belief that the community um in the community that District Seven Councilor and now Acting Mayor Jamie has been quietly supporting the proponent's second app application in this um cannabis shop, which was submitted after the school zone regulation was changed. Despite the community's request, we have no information whether she supports or opposes the proposal. A neutral stance gives us no indication. This is troubling since the applicants have not disclosed who their investors are, and they are and they are forcing their business on our community. They could at least tell us who the investors are. And so I just want to.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so anybody else who's going to be speaking? Um, what we've heard so far is the concern about um the investors in this in this business um and the number of organizations in our position. So please go ahead and give us new information, the next few speakers.
Okay, Robert George, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Robert George, Executive Director with Roxbury Main Streets, 2343 Washington Street. Roxbury Main Streets voted by its Board of Directors, who represents over two hundred residents and business in the Nubian Square Roxbury community, that may fully endorse the cannabis industry in Nubian Square as one of our goals is to attract a healthy mix of business to Roxbury. We believe that the cannabis industry will increase uh new foot traffic that we think will lead to spillover and increase success for the small business in Roxbury in general. Coupled to the fact that one of the partners in this business maintains and operates one of the most successful businesses in the in Nubian Square at a very high standard, so we believe all of those qualities will continue to enhance and improve Nubian Square. On behalf of Roxbury Main Streets, I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. James, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Saskia Van James, and um I'm a Cambridge resident. Um, I work at Massachusetts Recreational Consumer Council as educator lobbyist and board member, and I'm speaking.
Ms. James, thank you. Uh, I'd like to hear from somebody who lives in proximity of this proposal.
Okay, caller twenty-nine, you've been unmuted. Um, just uh six one seven two six six. Are you in a butter to this proposal?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you state your name and address yet for the record, please?
Yes, my name is uh Sadiki Cambon, and I'm the Chairman of the Nu- uh Nubian Square Coalition, and I reside uh in Roxbury. And let me just say, uh, you know, I hear the talk about who supports the- let me just say this, that from a ground level, the bottom line, like was uh stated previously, that the community is highly opposed to uh what we refer to as these drug dens, whether it be one ninety-five or the other one that's been referred to. Look, the bottom line is that with Nubian Square, we're looking for a new day in the square. And and we're working with folks who have an addiction to get them services they need so they won't be hanging in the square and trying to get rid of the criminal element providing. Now, you've talked about the second location that's being proposed, it's right next to a Mica Castillo liquor store. And we have folks going in and out of there that are in need of services and just barely surviving out there. So let me just say that there are six schools in the area, there's a bop stop almost immediate front door of the one ninety-five where if you drive by there, when school's getting out, we've got large numbers of children.
Mister Mister Cambon, thank you very much. So you're adding to uh the concern about uh location and proximity to a large number of of youngsters, okay? Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Um, Ryan, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Anson. I'm at Southern Upton Street in Boston, and I'm a real estate investor in Mission Hill and looking in Green Square right now. I wanted to speak out in support of this uh opportunity. I feel.
Sir Ryan, uh, Sir Ryan, you do you live in Roxbury in the neighborhood?
I live right on the South End Roxbury line.
Okay, so may I get somebody who is um a resident of Roxbury, please?
Okay, Marilyn Chase, you've been unmuted.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is Marilyn Chase. I live at forty-seven Hutchings Street. We like to think we're in Roxbury, though we have been designated as Dorchester. I've been a proud resident of Roxbury Dorchester for over forty years. I am a uh proud investor in this project. Um, and I'm pleased to have had the opportunity, along with a number of other people of color in Roxbury residents, to invest in a growing industry in Boston that we have typically been locked out of. I am very much in support of this project, along with my husband, Richard.
Ms. Chase, um, are you invested in this particular project or in the LLC?
I am invested in this particular project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you. Ma- uh, Ms. Ambassador, somebody else, please?
Uh, Connie, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Connie Forbes, forty-seven Wambach Street, um, in the Roxbury section of Roxbury. Um, so I have five different bullet points really quick. The Boston zoning code has not been changed and updated to reflect that the, to my knowledge, has been changed to reflect that the Boston Cannabis Board is proposing here. So I think this decision is premature um today because it hasn't been changed in the Boston zoning code. It should be changed legally before you start applying something because you're setting precedents that in the future, anyone comes to you and says, we're going to be doing this, and we're going to be changing this law. If you haven't changed the law, I think you're being premature. So you're going to set precedence to the traffic study as it was stated was current traffic levels. We're in pandemic times, so um current traffic levels are lower than they would normally be. So we're taking a risk that um we're looking at traffic that has not been um brought back up to the standard levels. And I will tell you that residents in the area have had to go home and going through Nubian Square, it can take them thirty minutes to go home, and it it can be less than two miles to go home in thirty minutes. Um, the uh proponent is saying exiting onto a live driveway as an exit. That does not make sense. It's dangerous. And if you close off the driveway, but you saw vehicles coming in and out, you're still putting people in danger. You're directly across from a park and a playground across the street within, you know, the width of a street. You're directly next to a playground and a park. And the fifth point is the definition of a cannabis facility. I don't know that they define the manufacturing and the retail as separate um parts under the definition of a um distance from retail facility, and those are my five points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to correct the record, um, the information that VHB and Howard Stein Hudson used was previous.
Hold on, I will call on you later.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to hear from anybody else who's who's here to give testimony.
We have one more raised hand.
Everybody who's spoken, I'm I'm wa- looking at the raised hands. Everybody who's spoken, please lower your hands. Thank you.
And F.R. Ahern, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm I did it by mistake.
Oh, okay. Can you lower your hand? I think that is, just make sure. I believe that is everyone, Madam Chair.
Is Mr.?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, Jonathan. Okay, there's two more raised hands. I'm sorry. Um, Jonathan Napoli, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Napoli. Um, from the Boston Gardener at twenty-one thirty-one Washington Street. And I would I would like to speak out in support of the proposed project in Nubian Square. I'm also a board member of the neighborhood, the Nubian Square Neighborhood Association, and the Nubian Neighborhood Association has given its unanimous approval to this project and has met personally with the team members, and we've been very impressed with both the team and their plan.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli. Um, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Um, Hans Smith, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, I'm with my daughter. So my name is Connie Smith, and I live at one forty-four Dudley Street, and I am in opposition of this proposal uh for just for some of the reasons already stated because of the heavily issues that we have already in the community with substance abuse. Uh, I I just and I personally live right there center on Dudley Street, and it's just a problem. And I'm just waiting, you know, for the city to be, you know, more active and really helping our community. And I just don't see how this is going to help our community, bring them more substance.
Thank you. That is Madam Chair, um.
Ms. Ambassador, did we get the caller?
Yes, that was Sadiki. Yep.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay, so please, everybody who's spoken, uh, please uh lower your hands. Um, and um, Mr. Fortune, uh, you did say that there were a number of letters in opposition?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Mr. Um, let's see, Mr. Keith.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I'm trying to figure out, because I think in your presentation, you covered a lot of what people raised in their opposition. Um, though, um, the one thing is, um, there is a, you know, mass cast does not stop at Mass and Cast. It's definitely a spill over into the neighborhood. Um, can you just describe to us um anything you might? This is a social issue, a community issue. Um, is there anything that you're doing on that behalf to support the community?
Well, I would say one beyond education within the store once you enter. I think the reality is, and this is this is going to be my opinion, the Nubian Square is an extension of Mass and Cast because Nubian Square shuts down at about two P M. in the afternoon. There isn't enough gen- there is enough activity in the area in order to keep that element out. They come to Nubian Square because there's not enough people there who are, you know, active actively engaging in commerce, actively spending money. That's why the element that you're referring to for Mass and Cast comes to the to our neighborhood. I live four blocks away from where I'm proposing this.
Oh, thank you.
So so that so that being said, we plan on bringing at minimum three hundred people to our store a day. That's three hundred people who've never come to Nubian Square. Nubian Square is the heart of um Roxbury's the heart of Roxbury's business district.
Mr. Keith, I I work there, so I do know this. You're speaking to the so anyway, so we spent a lot of time on this.
I just want to also just correct one thing, if I may. There were about a hundred and eighty letters of opposition. There were four hundred and seventy-one letters of support. So just to be clear, we have a lot of support. We have some opposition, but we have overwhelmingly more support than opposition. That should be that should be clarified because there was no mention of the support that we do have, including from District Seven City Councilor Anissa Sabi George, and businesses who directly abut our location, including Suya Joint, who also submitted a letter of support. Um, so it should be noted for the record that that support does exist.
Mr. Keith, Mr. Madam Chair, um, if I if we did have those letters, I would have said that. So if you have them and you want to send them to us, then please do. But we only have.
Ms. Haynes has those letters as of two weeks ago. Um, Jessica, the ambassador, was also on the email where I provided that information. I can forward the email right now if necessary. It's I have it right here.
Chair, I can attest to that email was sent.
Four hundred and seventy-one letters of support.
Mr. Um, Ms. Ambassador, can you please mute everybody and and just leave the board open? And may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a I'm gonna make a mo- I'm gonna make a motion for denial without prejudice. We're in a weird we get put in this weird position with the buffer zone and other dispensaries, and and I just would like to make a motion with denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
I oppose, Mark.
I oppose.
So there's there's two two oppositions. We are a six-member board. May I have another motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of denial.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, okay, you know what? Um, so what?
Uh, let me try. I I'm gonna make a motion for approval with BPD review for signage. Um, Mr. Jerr is absolutely right about the these changing, this shifting sands of the rules are driving me nuts. Um.
So I I think the question is.
But nonetheless, I'm just making a motion, and if there's a second.
Let me let me just clarify something. Ms. Barazza, what is the difference in your mind between denial without prejudice and denial?
Well, the denial without prejudice is assuming that they that the location is okay, and they just need to revise the in the plan of it. Doesn't really change um the the issues that were in front of us. I I am opposed to the project based on the letters of oppositions from the community.
No, no, hold on, hold on. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay. Uh, so Mr. Um, Mr. Olick, you were the last one with the motion. Forgive me. Uh, your motion is for approval with BPD design review. Is there a second? Okay, there is no second. So let's go back. Our options then are denial without prejudice and denial, so may I have a new motion?
If I if I may, I think that this is unfortunate because there seems to be paperwork that was submitted.
Hold on, Mr. Keith. You need to be quiet. This is a board discussion at this point.
But so my motion for denial without prejudice is to leave the option open for this applicant to come back because.
At this location?
Uh, potentially. I I mean, we have a location that's been approved by the Cannabis Board that we haven't seen yet that I think we can evaluate that. I do think that there needs to be a dispensary in this area. It 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 is a a a need. It's just where should we where should we where should we cite it?
So so I.
That's my thought for us.
Yeah, so so um, Ms. Barazza does have a point when she says that this uh for her perception uh for the denial, the straight denial vote says that this location is not right because there are too many related issues with the location. It's not to say there's not another location in Roxbury that works or or Nubian Square that works. So um, again, so we are back to the point, is it denial or denial without prejudice? Because either works in my perspective because it sounds like there needs to be um some more significant. Because either works in my perspective, because it sounds like there needs to be some more significant look at the proposal.
I'll second Mrs. Barazza's denial.
Is there, is there, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mark.
Mark's opposed, there were five members in support of the denial, so it's been denied. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, would you like to take a break before we go to the next case, or you want me to go?
Let's, let's see if there are any deferrals for 11 o'clock, and then we'll take a break.
I will do that right now. I will call 11 o'clock, it's now 11:41. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock cases, if you give me the address first, please.
196 Hart Street, Mr. Secretary.
196 Hart for the record, calling DOA 119-8971, 196 Hart Street. Name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, we are requesting a deferral in this matter to review the BPD recommendation of us.
So is this, so you, oh, so this is the first request for a deferral? May I have a motion, please?
Motion is per.
Is there a second?
Second, Jean.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
I have a date of October 5th at 12:30.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Mr. Secretary, yeah, Mr. Secretary, 134 Terrace Street, apologies.
What apology? One, I'm sorry, 134, and, 134, okay. HDOA 1211031, 134 Terrace Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Secretary, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McFerrin Quothea Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. Looking for a deferral, we need to go back to the Community Alliance of Mission Hill for their second meeting. It's on August 18th, which is eight days from now. We just, frankly, we were scheduled too quickly for the zoning board hearing, and we need one more meeting with them by their five o'clock.
Yeah, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
It will also have a date of October 5th at 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock only?
Okay, it is now 11:43. We will take a 15-minute break, and we will reconvene at noon time. The meeting is now adjourned.
The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, August 10th is back in session. Before we listen to the next case, I just want to take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
I'm still here, Madam Chair, I've been left.
Oh, good, good, good. No long lunch, huh? Mr. Olick?
Likewise.
Mr. Rogirio? Ms. Dong? Here. Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, still here.
Great. Ms. Panato?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's go back. Mr. Rogirio, are you back on? Attorney Bloom, let us know when he's back, okay?
All right, Madam Chair, I will.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton?
Where else would I be on a Tuesday?
Exactly. This is the place to be. Okay, Mr. Fortune, let's proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling next case, calling DOA 116-6824, 25 Mallon Road. This is subdivided lot into two lots, erect new semi-attached single-family dwelling, townhouse style, one off-street parking. The project is part of the Department of Neighborhood Development. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building type number of stories is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Deering, please back.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Parent, 15 Greenoff Street, Dorchester, 02124. With me I have my architect, Rashmi Ramaswani. This is a project for the Department of Neighborhood Development where we're developing new construction homes. This case specifically is for a semi-attached single-family dwelling. Half the building, 27 Mallon Road, was approved two weeks ago. This half of the building, 25 Mallon Road, has the same zoning relief requests. I'll let my architect speak more about that in a moment.
Okay. I think that everybody who was on that case is here today, but for Ms. Panato. And Ms. Panato, you're aware of the DND projects and the prototypes that they have, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I think our concern the last time was the handicap unit or handicap accessibility. So I'm assuming that this is still something that's on the radar screen here with us.
Is that a question to me, I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, it's for you.
Yes, it is still on the radar. You know, taking back a little bit, there was three topics really. It was to get in contact with some neighbors that had proposed, one specifically at 26 Mallon Road. I did reach out to that, but that was not successful. However, I've spoken with her neighbors and provided my contact information.
Okay.
Issues, the issues that Ms. Barazza explained, which was handicap accessibility. I've gotten in contact with the Department of Neighborhood Development. They were on the call as well.
Mm-hmm.
And at this point, they're having their internal discussions, which I'm not, you know, invited to at the moment because that's not what the RFP called for. And lastly, Madam Chair, one of your concerns was the retention of mature trees. And my team and I, we've gone through significant efforts to try to keep mature trees, you know, on site. And those are the three topics that we discussed mainly two weeks ago.
Thank you. Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd go recommend support of this proposal. It was through a DND-led community process and engaged many community partners. And this crucially brings affordable housing much needed during this housing crisis. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, behalf of Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
I'm sure I do not have any rights here.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval. And I also want to commend the applicant for being conscious of the points that we put forward at the last hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Have a great day.
You too.
Calling next case, calling DOA 121-3919, 2200 Dorchester Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to a general group care residence and administrative office, the Gavin House. We'll renovate the existing building and use the building as part of their substance abuse program. Interior renovations, new structural openings for new windows, entrances, facade upgrades. Violation is Article 65, Section 8, general group care use is forbidden. And Article 65, Section 8, administrative office use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Hold on, Ms., one minute. Ms. Barazza, do you have to recuse?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So to the applicant, this is a six-member board and you need five members in support. It's your choice whether to proceed or not.
We'll proceed.
Okay, so please go ahead, put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I represent the Gavin Foundation, which is the proponent of this project. The Gavin Foundation proposes with this application to change the occupancy of the former convent at St. Gregory's to a general group care residence and administrative offices for its program. The zoning relief before you today are two use variances, one for a general group care residence and one for their administrative offices. All of the work to this existing building will be to the interior. No changes to the footprint of the building or any exterior changes. Rather, a complete conversion of the convent space would actually lend itself quite well to the setup for individual rooms for the proposed residence of this facility. The proposed use is a 30-bed women's residential recovery program for women who are homeless or living in other dysfunctional circumstances. The average length of stay will be four to six months. And the facility will be fully staffed by professional licensed individuals in the recovery space. There'll be five full-time staff members during the day, three in the evening, and two on the overnight shift. In terms of the Gavin Foundation and its experience with similar programs in Boston, their headquarters is in South Boston. And with me on the hearing is Mr. John McGann, who's the president and CEO of the Gavin Foundation. And Mr. McGann would just like to briefly, a minute, talk about this site location and the proposed women's program at this location. So, John?
So, Mr. McGann, we're going to jump the gun a little bit and ask you very specifically, will these residents have children with them? Or do you see these as single individuals?
These will be single individuals. And should it be determined that somebody is pregnant, once they've been into the program, then their child would be allowed to stay for three months.
Okay. A postpartum, three months, and your average stay is four to six. And just tell us generally how the day is set up. And, you know, the one thing that we've heard a lot about in other projects that we've seen is, you know, the lack of, I don't know if it's called entertainment or something to keep residents busy perhaps in the evening, so that they might be, you know, just general hanging out in the streets or on the sidewalk. So can you tell us and speak to us about that, please?
Sure. So when the women come into the facility, first they're screened to come in to make sure that we're the appropriate level of care. And then each woman would be given an individual service plan with their clinician. Part of that plan would be, the first few weeks in the house, they would be in the house pretty much doing groups during the day and in the evening, so that we could get a real good look at them and figure out what their needs are. From there, what happens is, we look to say, okay, is this somebody who needs educational? Maybe they don't have a TED, so we want to do high SAT test, that sort of thing? Or is this somebody who needs job training? And we run the federal ATR program, which is Access to Recovery. And we have a host of programs that would put people in for training so that they would be self-sufficient upon discharge. Or it could be women that have had an interest in treatment that have jobs and are going to go back to their jobs. So we take all that into consideration in developing their plan. And that's what they would do during the day. In the evening, everybody would come back for dinner at 5:00. They would eat as a community together. And then from that point, they would all do an in-house meeting. And then they would do an out-of-house meeting where they would do AA, NAGA, Families Anonymous, whatever would be part of their program. This is a similar setup, but obviously with different groups. We would provide gender-specific, evidence-based practices in this program, but it would operate similar to homes on, rather, other recovery homes in Boston. Hamilton House on Pine and Ida Road, Gavin, East Fourth Street, and Johnstown Recovery House. So it would operate in a similar fashion.
Okay, so for example, if somebody needed work readiness skills, would they go off-site for work readiness skills or is that provided in-house?
So two things happen. One is we have an employment specialist that works in our outpatient office. That would be somebody that they would meet with. But again, part of our ATR program, we contract with Mass Hire and JBS Jewish Vocational Services for a three-week job readiness program. And then they could either go look for work from that point, or they would roll into various training programs, from building pathways, the community servings, to NECAT test kitchen, to the YMCA for office practice. We have a whole host, be fit for computer work and automotive, if that's what they were into.
So does, I'm sorry, so if they're in work readiness at JBS, does JBS assist with placement or is most placement through you?
It's a combination. We try to assist with all the programs that we work with through the ATR program. Part of their agreement is that they would help our participants find employment upon discharge.
And how about visiting hours? Is there visiting time with family?
So the program is set up so that there's no visitors during the week at all. The only time that there would really be visitation is near the end of their stay. People might come to help do discharge planning. But the women would, if they had family, it was appropriate for them to spend time when they would earn weekend passes, where they could go home and visit. First, day passes, and then eventually an overnight pass to help with the family reintegration. So it's not like everybody would be vowing into the facility for visitation.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, honestly, I wasn't aware that Ms. Barazza was going to recuse herself, so I have not seen the plans in advance. Based on what I'm looking at the screen now, they seem okay, but...
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just, I got a question, I don't know if it's from Mr. McGann or Mr. Lacass. We were in a similar situation over here in East Boston with the old church convent building, and it was turned into a SOVA house and not a halfway house program like you were. And they just did it, they didn't have to come before us. So if you did a SOVA house, you wouldn't need the relief since you want to do something more intense, more scrutinized. That's why you're here today, correct?
Correct, yes. Our program would be licensed by the Department of Public Health and accredited, national accreditation through CAF.
Yeah, and Joe, I think it has to do with what definition we fall under, under the zoning code. This is general group care residence, which is not an allowed use at this location.
And what is the zoning district, Mr. Lacass?
It's a 3FD zoning sub-district.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Just a quick comment, I'm very aware of the work the Gavin Foundation has done and it's very impressive.
Yeah, it is. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters meeting for the appellant of 2200 Dorchester Ave. on July 28th, where community concerns were adequately addressed. The appellant received multiple letters of support, including from the Lower Mills Civic Association, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Services, and several elected officials. And as this recovery home would be a tremendous addition for women in rehab, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask anybody who's here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal, please raise your hand so Ms. Ambassador can get to you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support and would like to thank this organization for all their great work.
Madam Chair, members of the board. I please, Madam Chair, members of the board, echoing the sentiments of Council Baker's office, Councilor Larity, I'd like to record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. The Gavin Foundation plays a critical role in the city of Boston by offering more than adolescent programs to help treat neighbors and families impacted by the opioid epidemic. The councilor believes that this project would be a valuable addition to the city of Boston and our efforts to combat the epidemic substance use disorders and mental and behavioral health issues. Therefore, the councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Jessica. Madam Chair, secretary here. We do have letters of opposition, we also have letters of support. And I want to echo the comments of Mr. McGann, does a great job in his team.
Okay, Jordan, Christopher from Senator Collins' office, you've been unmuted?
Hi, my name is Jordan Crispin, I'm in Senator Collins' office, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony. We're writing in support of your application. This program would supply critically needed substance abuse treatment for 30 women. And Senator Collins is a member of the Mental Health Substance Abuse, or Substance Use and Recovery Committee, and he understands how important a resource like this is. He also grew up near their 675 East Fourth Street location and has seen how they have proven themselves in running multiple locations while maintaining successful relationships with neighbors in the community. We urge the board to vote favorably and expeditiously in support of this application. The office will follow up with written testimony. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
Anne Smith, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi.
Oh, we can't hear you. Can you speak up?
Yes, I'm calling into Stern as a parent of a student adjacent to the school.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record?
The party proposed, and I just wanted to know how concerned of the parents, student body, been addressed in terms of our students moving to the school daily and picked up traffic, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, and caller 10, you've been unmuted, 617-268. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Madam Chair, members of the board, mine are representatives of the Carpenters Union. On behalf of Carpenters Union Carpenters, we want to go on record in support of this project. And I want to thank the Gavin Foundation for such an amazing job in the services that provides to our communities throughout the city.
Thank you. All right, Erin Murphy, you've been unmuted?
Hi, Nikki, Erin Murphy. I'm a mother of a graduate from the Gavin House. I'm a neighbor to the Lower Mills site and also candidate for city council. And I'm here to give strong support to John McGann and the Gavin Foundation and the Councilor Baker. I know firsthand what the group care organization is, and I know they'll be a wonderful neighbor. They are at the one in South Boston and all of their other locations, so I'm here in support of them.
Thank you. FR, Heyern?
Yep, Father Jack? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Father, go ahead.
Okay. Father Jack, I'm St. Gregory's. Politely, I want to support it. The parishioners are very excited about it, especially because it's a women's program. Many remember 50 or 60 believers living there. We also had a meeting with the parents, and there was a group of about 10 that were concerned that they... I think the diocese dealt with that very well. We brought in risk management. I think the diocese, it's a protect that there's really no safety issues.
Just don't have the shit. If it was fucking his body, if I can be two, two units and two...
Excuse me? Hello?
Okay, thank you, Father. Ms. Ambassador, can you leave to everybody, please? Ms., Joe?
Okay, yeah, okay, got it. Awesome.
Okay. So, Mr. McGann, a couple of questions. First, are you getting some people from Mass and Cast from that whole issue that's tearing us apart a little bit? And second, from the letters I've seen, I hope that you will continue your conversations with parents from that, from the school.
Well, you have solid rest. The process for getting into the women's program would be medical detox, clinical stabilization, before anybody could transition into the recovery home. We want to make sure that it's the appropriate level of care and that they receive the appropriate medical attention they need. The goal is, and always has been Gavin, works closely with the city of Boston Office of Recovery Services to help get people into a detox program, which is located in Quincy, and then our stabilization unit. And so we've been doing that all along in partnership with the city. And that's what prompted us to do this is, there's so few beds available for women. That's why we want to expand the services. But I want to make it clear that this is several steps away from, it's not like they'd be walking in directly off of Mass Cast into this home. They would have to go through the other appropriate steps in the proper treatment prior to admission to the program. So I just wanted to make that clear. The other concern I heard was traffic. Most of these women won't have...
No, no, no. The only thing I do want to do is that we did receive a number of letters from parents at the school. So I do think that, you know, you've done fantastic work, and you continue to do fantastic work as part of the Gavin Foundation. The goal is to try and see how, you know, we embrace the residents, I mean, the parents of the school so that they do have a level of comfort in taking care of the less, the needy in our community. Okay? And so, given that, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second. Do we need, is there any signage or anything that would involve BPDA design review on the exterior?
No.
Not really, Mr. Ehrlich.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 118-1513-61 Lindhurst Street. This is a three-family dwelling with rear balconies and parking at the rear of the building. Violation Article 65, Section 42, conformity with existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 8, this use is forbidden, a 3F1 that's a home. Article 65, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, board. Timothy Fraser, PO Box 5, Wilmington, Mass. is the business address. Also on the line with me is the applicant, Lucian McPherson, well, Joseph Snow, and the architect on the team, Chris Drew.
Okay, go ahead, please. Tell us what's being proposed.
Okay, so this is a proposal for a new three-family dwelling on a vacant lot. And I should add that this is not the original proposal. After the applicant's extensive community process, it actually completely redesigned from the ground to the proposal that you see here, resulting in the violations. As a matter of fact, the Melville Park Association, who we met with, we consulted with their architect to come up with this design, which we think is appropriate for the community. I'll pass it over to Chris Drew so he can speak more specifically some of the violations.
So, unit one is the ground floor level is...
Chris, can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Sorry, Chris Drew. Mrs. Address of 1156 Dorchester Ave, Dorchester.
So go ahead.
So unit one is the entire ground level. It'll be one unit consisting of about sixteen hundred square feet, three hundred and two pounds. And second, and unit two and three will consist of two bi-level units between the second and some living space on the third, on the partial third floor, each of about fourteen hundred and forty-five square feet, three beds, three baths. The project will also provide three off-screen parking spaces. And as far as like the rear yard violation, it's actually the balconies that we have on the second level, which are about five by ten, private outdoor space for each unit that actually caused that rear yard setback violation.
And so, so the, I suppose that the building height, basically, it's thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. Are you going halfway on that?
So we are, we are at thirty-five feet. Of course, we are a little over fifty percent of the floor below. So that's why we are not building out the entire third floor, if you will. But because we are more than fifty percent, it's considered a third story.
And tell us about the building alignment. Is it aligned or not?
So it's not. So it's according to the front yard setback, the building itself is at fifteen feet. But we do have a front porch that's about nine feet off the front property line. The buildings themselves, like the building to the right-hand side of us is approximately, it's approximately about twenty, twenty-one feet back. And to the left, it's about, it's about twenty-nine feet back. So we're kind of in the middle, if you will, with our setback.
And can you talk through the parking? Is this, is it collect today? Who's running? Ms. Edwards, can you show us the parking plan?
That'll be the one sheet there will have the... So basically, as she's bringing it up, it is a, it is a single driveway which leads to the back. You have the three eight-six-by-twenty parking spaces. No tandem or anything like that. It's three individual parking spaces. There is buffering between the rear block line in the parking itself and the back of the building as well.
Okay. Ms. Veraza, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate. You don't have a third floor plan of the dorm room?
Yes, yep, right there. It's actually on this page right here.
Oh, okay. Got it. Sorry about that.
So like you don't build all the way to the back. And then there is some empty space in the front part, if you will, on the front crosswalk.
Looks good.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Quinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The appellant of 61 Lindhurst completed outreach through in a butters meeting held on May 13th in a meeting with the Melville Park Association. As a proposal is in a design overlay district, our office would like to go on record in support with the BPDA design review. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have to raise hands if we don't have any.
Madam Chair? Sorry, Madam Chair Secretary here. We do have letters of opposition and one letter, signed tape of support.
Thank you.
Any electeds? I'll start with Kim. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, absolutely. My name is Kim Desens. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Great. I live at 52 Lindhurst Street, so I can see 61 out my window right now. My main concern is for the size of this large building, the amount of the lot that it will take up. There's already been many mature trees taken down in order to build such a large-sized building. And this is not at all in kind with the eighteen-hundred-style houses that all of the street has.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Caller 56, 781526, you've been unmuted. Are you looking to give us some of this proposal?
Yep, my name is Alicia O'Reilly. I live at 66 Lindhurst Street, so also directly across. I am in opposition of this. Me and my husband feel that this is way too large for that lot size. It's over four hundred square feet livable, where all surrounding homes are under three thousand square feet livable. We also feel deceived by, I would like to say that we felt deceived because we were told it was going to be a three-family, excuse me. And then the plans ended up being a three-family. So we just feel it's far too large. We are not in opposition of something smaller going there, but this seems to fit large for the space in comparison of all direct neighbors.
Thank you.
And caller 50, 617922, you've been unmuted.
Yes. I would like to speak. I'd like to speak in objection. My name is Peter Van Zelt. I am an abutterer living at 65 Lindhurst Street, Dorchester. I am opposed to this project. It is too large for the space. I have two objections. Number one, it's significant, significantly reduces the amount of green space and allows only an amount of green, which is not typical of the area and of the building surrounding it. Number two, I have a substantial objection to the issue of parking at the rear of the house. It is proposed that in that parking of three cars, those cars will face my house. In the evening, when those cars park or when they drive away, whatever they do, they will be shining lights into the windows of my house, both in my kitchen and in bedrooms, and will be creating a substantial nuisance, both in dining and sleeping. I would like to know, does the builder propose to create a significant barrier between their property, proposed property, and our house that will mitigate the, both the noise and the light that are going to create a substantial nuisance to us? And we would love to know what they propose to do to mitigate that problem. Thank you.
Gloria, you've been unmuted.
My name is...
Oh, go ahead. Sorry about that.
My name is Gloria Middlebrooks. I live at 62 Kenwood Street. I'm a director abutter behind the project. The neighborhood's concern has been the size, as has been stated before. And while looking at a plot plan, you see ten feet...
Sorry, Ms. Middlebrook, are you living in the same house as the previous speaker?
No.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Because he did talk about being, you know, directly behind. So go ahead.
I think he actually said directly beside.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so I was going to say, our concern again is the size. And the numbers have been stated that it is almost twice the size of the homes that are directly abutting on the side and including ours in the rear. And our concern as a neighborhood was the look of the property. So a few ten feet here and a ten feet there and over this far back from someone else is one thing to say on a plot plan. But when you visually see it, it's another thing. And my, my opposition is that we were never presented with adequate drawings of what, how this property would look next to its director abutters. They made an attempt to do it, but in their effort to get neighborhood support, their drawing was quite inadequate and made their property look like it was half the size, which is also a blatant misrepresentation of their information. Also, they presented statistics...
Thank you, Ms. Middlebrook. Can I have the next caller, Ms. Ambassador?
Yep, I'm Lucian. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Lucian McPherson on the applicant.
Okay, so Ms. McPherson, can you hold on? Anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
No, ma'am. I see no additional answers.
Okay. So I guess you have a problem here because there's a lot of opposition on this project. So can you explain and talk us through some of the issues that we've heard about? About the size of the dwelling? We understand that this is a single-family district. You're proposing what neighbors see as a large three-family. Any thoughts on that?
Madam Chair, also, if the applicant can just clarify, out of the four director abutters, how many are opposed to the project?
I'll take the abutter question. I wasn't exactly clear on everyone's addresses. Maybe the clerk could just read back which ones are direct abutters. I wasn't exactly clear on that.
So we heard from two that are at the rear of the property. And I'm looking at the Google site image. There's one next to it. There's one house to the left, one house to the right. Do they have, do they support the project? The properties are adjacent to the, to the proposal.
Lucian, do you want to take that? Is Lucian unmuted?
Okay. So let's just take a break. And just, Ms. Ambassador, if you can mute everybody. The board, let's see. Let's just go ahead with a motion, unless people think that it's survivable through a deferral. So let me hear from you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, motion carries. We, okay, so we'll see you at a later date.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 101-6312, 69 Bailey Street. This is a combined parcels 4522 and 4523. Demolish the existing building and erect a new three-story, 21-unit residential building. Units will all be compact living units. Violations, Article 65, Section 41, our street parking is sufficient. Article 65, Section 41, our street loading is insufficient. Article 65, Section 42, conformity with existing building alignment. Article 65, Section 8, use of a multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 65, 69, the building height is excessive. Article 65, 69, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article 65, 69, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent David Murphy and James Kelleher, the owners and developers of the property. Project architect Tim Johnson also joins us. This is an application for a new 21-unit residential apartment building submitted in performance with the city's Compact Living Pilot Program as an Article 80 small project. This was approved by the VRA Board on July 15th. The project site consists of two parcels containing approximately 18,284 square feet of land located in 69 Bailey Street in Dorchester's Ashmont Peabody Square neighborhood. While the zoning is 2F5,000, the building on the site is commercial, with the most recent use being a VFW post with nearly 10,000 square feet of paved parking surrounding it. The site fronts northerly on Bailey Street, but is approximately 200 feet from Dorchester Avenue and is located within two minutes' walking distance of the Ashmont Redline Rapid Transit Station. and is located within two minutes walking distance of the Ashmont Red Line Rapid Transit Station. Of the 21 proposed units, there would be two studios, two two-bedroom units, and 17 one-bedroom units. Size of the studio units would be 417 square feet. The one-bedroom units would range from 565 to 622 square feet. And the two-bedroom units would be 847 square feet, which means that all of these units, while technically designated compact, are less than 10% smaller than standard metro-sized units. All units have either a private balcony, balcony or patio, as well as shared access to over 7,000 square feet of common usable open space. As the site plan shows, more than one-third of the site is landscaped open space. All units also have shared access, access to shared remote workspaces, as well as shared belt storage. And all units have in-unit washers and dryers. In light of the proximity to Rapid Transit, there'll be eight off-street parking spaces, as well as room for two car-share spaces, which could include charging stations for electric vehicles. There is zoning violations for the parking, which, as I say, is consistent with the Compact Living Pilot, as well as for off-street loading. The multifamily use requires a variance. The cited violation for...
Hold on, Mr. Maranci. I can understand the parking, but what about off-street loading? Why cannot, why can that not be accommodated within the property?
Madam Chair, it could be. It would reduce the amount of usable open space. The thinking is that for a 21-unit residential building, that there could be a parking area that would be, since they're not designated parking, it could be reserved when there is scheduled to be a move-in or move-out. So again, it could be done either by reducing open space or just since this will be a fully managed rental building, one of the rental spaces could be deemed to be unoccupiable during move-ins and move-outs.
And we need to figure out how that happens because as a board, we've been approving a lot of relief from off-street loading, and of course, that happens, now it happens on-street, creating problems for the neighborhood. The other question I have for you is the side yard insufficiency. I noticed that in your drawings, you have the abutter on one side. How close are you to that property line? What's required and what are you proposing?
Madam Chair...
Required side yard...
Go ahead, George.
I'm sorry, is that Tom?
No, Tim, go ahead, George.
Oh, sorry. Madam, the required side yard setback is 10 feet. There's a violation on one side, as the chair noted, on the left side, where at two points, an interior stairway and a side bay. Corners of the building lie within six feet of the lot line. But something like 98% of the building observes the required side yard setbacks. It's only at the two pinch points where there is a stairway corner, an interior stairway, and where there is a bay window.
Okay, and then are any, none of these proposals pose to overhang the sidewalk, right? Everything is maintained on the property. Okay, I see.
That is correct. The building is well setback.
Okay, excellent.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, on that point, Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this, and it just mentioned what you just said, so...
Okay.
Regarding 69 Bailey Street, the opponent should install a buffer along Bailey Street to prevent the vehicle abutting Bailey Street from overhanging the sidewalk.
Excellent, thank you. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I forget how many, did you say 10% of the units are a compact living unit below metro standards?
No, Mr. Ehrlich, all of the, this is the Compact Living Pilot project, but of the units, all of them are within 10% of actually being standard metro-sized units.
Okay, within 10%. So given that...
Yeah, so they're in the large side of CLT.
Well, but CLT is small.
So why didn't you just, you know, go metro? Because it just sounds like it would be a better living situation for everybody around.
Well, before you answer that question, if you don't, I guess I want to know what you consider, given that the CLT program involves a trade-off with common space, can you describe what that common space is and how, and how many square feet it involves?
Yes, so addressing this, it's a, it's a, it's a Compact Living Pilot. It started as a 29-unit project because of its proximity to the Dorchester Ave, I'm sorry, the Ashmont T-Station, it was spelled, that was perfect.
So, Mr. Maranci, just as I tell every applicant, to me, it's irrelevant where you start. To us, the baseline is the zoning, so help us on that.
Well, I was beginning to speak about the zoning, which I'd like to do for the record. So as I mentioned, there's a zoning violation for the parking, which, again, the parking is consistent with the Compact Living Pilot. Another one of the reasons why this was chosen as they are elected to go a CLT route. There's a cited violation for accessory parking being forbidden, which I believe is erroneous. I couldn't explain why parking...
Yeah, that's erroneous, yeah.
Parking here would be, the maximum FAR under the code here is .5, proposed FAR is .9. There is refusal, like, two height violations for height from grade and number of stories. This is a proposed three-story building, while the code allowance is two and a half. So there is a violation there for that three-story building. The cited violation for height from grade is also an error, however. The maximum height limit here is 35 feet, while the proposed building height is 30 feet. I talked about the required side yard setback, but there are two points on the left side of the building only, where the, where the setback is six feet, but it is predominantly 10 feet even on the left side of the building. The, there's a front yard setback violation cited, requirement is 15 feet. This building is 12 feet, which is, it's not an actual performance, we didn't do an existing modal alignment, but it is substantially compliant with the prevailing modal on the street, not necessarily on the side, but on both sides. This is, again, it's a CLT project, shared space, that Mr. Ehrlich asked about. Unfortunately, on my screen, I still see the operations overview slide from the Rooted and Roxbury presentation. I assume that that's not the case for everybody, otherwise...
No, no, it's not the case for us. We're looking at a rent ring, because that was going to raise the next question for me, was that roof deck and access to the roof deck. But no, we're, we're at the right slide deck.
Okay, and Tim, Tim Johnson is here, and I interrupted Tim earlier when he was about to speak. Tim, if you want to speak about the shared meeting space and about the roof deck and roof access.
Thank you, George. Madam Chair, yes, we have a shared access space, a shared access space of 677 square feet. It will be outfitted for remote workspaces within there for user by tenants. We also have 7,200 square feet of landscape area, including a badminton court in the rear of the property. The roof deck is only accessible by management for mechanical units, and we have a large solar array proposed for the top of the building.
Can you speak to affordability for this project?
Yes, as George mentioned, of the 21 units, three will be affordable units.
And the IDP rents for the affordable units are currently at $1,082. For the market rate, my clients are anticipating one bedrooms at $1,500, two bedrooms at $2,022.50 for the three-bedroom units.
Where, since there aren't floor plans on the screen, where, where is that shared space, the internal shared space?
The shared space, Mr. Ehrlich, is on the ground floor. As you come into the large entry area, there is an elevator, and then there is a shared space. So the shared space has, is accessible. And as I mentioned, it's, will be outfitted with the latest technology for remote workspaces.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members, with respect to Mr. D'Amico's comments, I believe he was probably looking at an earlier iteration of the plans. As I mentioned, there is a 12-foot front setback, and there is no parking located in the front, on the forward portion of the building. It's all in the rear.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to...
Madam Chair, just for reference, on Mr. D'Amico, that was dated August 3.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dante Teeferson of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of the proposal. The BPDA along with their urban design team has made changes to the original proposal to work on with the community and design review process. This includes locating the building to contribute more to the discreet, safe, safe than service parking would, reduce the overall massing by taking the floor, which would reduce the overall number of units, altering the roof line, as well as redesigning the balcony to feel more open, and revision to the building color scheme. The proposal is to be approved. The mayor's office would ask the applicant to continue to work on the revisions to the building and continue communication with the community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have a couple of letters of opposition and a few letters of support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple raised hands. Jeffrey, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jeff Kreebel. My address is 145 Ashmont. My property stretches from Ashmont Street to Bailey, so that the back of my house faces kitty corner across from this property. And the reason that I am in favor of it is that I really, am really concerned about affordable housing and some of the developments that have been around the Ashmont Station have been very positive for the neighborhood. Also, I know that there was concern about the number of units and about the multi-housing issue, but from actually the place right next to where this lot is, is a mental health facility that has several people, and all the way to the Ashmont Station along Bailey, all of those units are not single or two-family homes, but multi-family homes. And so I don't really see this being something that disrupts, you know, the neighborhood as far as having multi-family dwellings, because we have triple deckers, we have one apartment unit that has six units in it that's directly behind me.
Thank you, Ms. Barazza. Is there anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Yes, Joseph Snow. Have you been unmuted? Can you state your name and address for the record, please? He might be having some connectivity issues.
Joseph Snow was put for the last case.
Oh, he was put for the last, okay, so I think we're all set. We know it.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the 1230 cases. It's now 12:53. I'm going to call the 1230 cases. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1230? Hold on.
13, 15, and 17 Norton Street.
Thank you, counsel. For the record, calling DOA 1167470, 13 Norton Street. There are two companion cases, DOA 116747315 Norton Street, DOA 116747517 Norton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking here today administrative referral. We were prepared to move forward ISD, one of the plans to go to fire review, and that has not happened yet, so we are...
Okay, hold on, hold on, counsel. May I have a motion, please?
Defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A date, please?
Yeah, October 5 at 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1230?
Madam Chair, members of the board, 661 Tremont Street.
For the record, calling DOA 1053181, 661, 661A Tremont Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of RCALC. With the business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave. Requested deferral at this time. Denaro Meyer, we were revising the plans, and I mixed up the deadlines and did not refile on time, and we have to meet the community again.
May I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second, Jean.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. A date, please?
We have a date of October 19 at 12:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1230? Mary, now we'll go back to the next case, next two cases. Calling DOA 1190415713, River Street. There is a companion case, DOA 1186247715, River Street. This is 713, the subdivision of Pasol, to build a three-family house, 715, River Street. Violation is Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking and loading. Article 69 and Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. And Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. This is for 715. This is building a three-family house with front and rear decks. The violation is Article 10, Section 1. Limitation of the off-street parking area, Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking and loading requirement. Article 69, Section 30-1, conformity with existing building alignment. Article 69, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, useful open spaces insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Please, please speak up.
Yes, my name is Nethro Pierre. My mother, Michelle Pierre-Villemont, has 713 River Street, proposing for the three-family home on 715 River Street. What we're proposing is, the issues that we're visiting is the off-street parking and the lot area is insufficient.
Okay, so, so just, let's back up for a minute. So your mother lives at 713 River Street? Is that a one or a two-family dwelling?
Two-family.
It's a two-family dwelling, and how, and is there any occupancy in the basement?
Uh, no.
And how does parking work on that lot?
On which lot?
On 713 River.
Um, it uses the block that you see on Young Rand Road.
Okay. Okay, and then tell us about 715 River Street. Tell us, first of all, the types of bedrooms. Is it a one, two bedrooms? The square foot, the square feet of each of those bedrooms?
I'm going to... Yes, so there's three bedrooms. I don't know the specifics of the bedroom sizes.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, can you scroll so we can just see the building in context of the parking, et cetera? And is this a prefab, or will it be done from, or not?
Stick-built.
It's stick-built, okay. Ms., Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this one. Regarding 715 River Street, in his opinion, the BTD, there should be no parking allowed on-site regarding this case. The area does not have enough room for safe maneuverability, and the request involves front yard parking. Finally, the curb cut, the curb cut would have to be relocated.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak, either in support of or in opposition of this project? Please raise your hands, please raise all your hands.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of 713 and 715 River Street. An abutters meeting was conducted on Tuesday, June 15, 2021. And our office has received no letters or testimony in opposition. And we have received one letter in support of this project from Health Leads, which is a health equity-focused nonprofit that has been working in the Boston community for over 20 years. They receive funding from the Boston Office of Food Access. In May 2021, this group of Hyde Park and Rosendale community members came together to reduce food insecurity... food insecurity in these neighborhoods. And they have been distributing health and foods, um, from this address.
Okay, okay. So all we need to do, I mean, if they've been doing that from this address and this is supposed to be a residential address, you know, we, we may be walking some fine line here. So let's just talk about the construction at 715 River Street and the subdivision. Is anybody here to speak either in support of or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Counselor Ricardo Royer's office. We'd like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Do you have any of the records? If not, I'll go to Helena. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Helena Tong. I live at 20 Friendship Road at Hyde Park. I am also the president of Bell Now Family Neighborhood Association. And this proposed site development is under the umbrella of our Neighborhood Association. Our neighbors have been aware of the butters meeting and as well as additional information. And we would like to go on record in support of this proposed development.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. So given the fact that, um, there are, um, that, that Mr. D'Amico's, um, preference and recommendation is that there should not be any parking on-site because there should be, because it's essentially front yard parking, uh, given that fact, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso of BPDA Design Review on the massing and to also not include on-site parking and to withhold the five-feet yard, side yard setback.
Is this five, five-feet side setback on both sides?
On both sides, yes. So the proposed deck right now encroaches to two-foot-one. So it's to say nothing should encroach on a five-feet side yard setback.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I see that you're ready to go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling an ex-case, calling BOA 117-628-374-G Street. This is to confirm occupancy as an existing single-family and change to a three-family and renovate. Proposed third-story addition, enlarge the existing headhouse and add a roof deck. Violations Article 68, Section 29, roof deck restriction. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is sufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name is Holly O'Brien. Madam Chair, members of the board, I reside at 74 G Street, um, where the proposed, uh, project, um, is, uh, being requested.
Okay, so...
Working with Devin Marini.
Okay. Just second you. Please go ahead and describe to us what you're proposing to do and where those two additional units are proposed to be built.
I am proposing, um, to go from a one-family, uh, unit to a three-family. Uh, the ground level, or I should say, um, entrance onto G Street will be a one-bedroom unit. Um, there's currently, uh, approximately six levels in this home. It's been in my home, in my family for, uh, 80 years. Uh, so we're going into the fourth generation. Uh, it needs a lot of updating and so I'm taking on this project and hopefully maximizing the space, um, allowed and, um, and opportunity to be able to stay in this community. Um, I've been living here in South Boston in this neighborhood.
Okay, um, so hold on, so, hold on. Um, who, who is your architect? Do you have your architect with you? So, Devin, can you put your name and address on the record? There are a number of violations here. Can you just walk through them for us?
Sure. Uh, Devin Riley Marini, uh, business address, 1 Billings Road, Quincy, Massachusetts, Chu and Company.
Yeah, so go ahead, please tell us, uh, walk through the, uh, application. I, we, as you know, we need to know what the conversion is, how the conversion occurs, and what the size of each dwelling unit will be.
Sure. Um, so right now it's a single-family, uh, in a multi-family zone. So we're looking to change it from a single to a three-unit dwelling. When you enter off G Street, the first floor will be one unit that is about, um, hold on one second, I just have to zoom in.
Ms. Edwards, can you zoom in some more so we can see what the, what the unit size is? Thank you.
Unit two, which is on the first level, is about 600 square feet. It's a one-bedroom unit. Um, and then when you go downstairs, we have a two-level unit that is a bit bigger. Um, it's, it is the, the garden level and then the lower level. From the rear, it's exposed, but from the front, um, it's the garden level. It's a, a little bit over, uh, 1,100 square feet. It's a two-bedroom, one-bathroom unit.
And the third unit?
Third unit, uh, so it, if you come in off G Street, there's a common entry hall. The first unit you enter to the left, the lower unit you enter at the back of the hall, and then the third unit you go up the stairs, which is another two-floor unit with the headhouse that we're proposing a, on the third floor, there is an addition off the back that just covers the footprint of the floors below. And on the roof level, we are proposing extending the headhouse and adding a roof deck up above. Um, the third unit is a little bit over 1,700 square feet. It's, um, five bedrooms, two baths.
Okay, so let's go to this, um, garden level. Could you tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is in the, in the basement and what the floor-to-ceil height is?
Sure. If you go up, it's the green unit. Yep. So, I mean, the head heights, the head heights vary a bit. Um, it's never lower than seven foot six in the finished space. Um, but there's a, it's kind of a mezzanine level where the kitchen overlooks the living room, which has a, a ceiling height of about 11.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Parraza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Um, board members, I need your help on this because I'm, for some reason, feeling like this is a very dense proposal with all these units plus that, that headhouse. So please help me, um, with the questioning to understand what's being proposed.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at Google Maps and it looks to me like this is a series of attached buildings, uh, on G Street that all have the exact same design on the facades and the same roof line. So suddenly adding a whole new headhouse on top seems like it would stick out like a sore thumb. Am I reading this right or wrong?
There's an, there's an existing headhouse currently. Um, it's, we're not moving it up in the front at all. We're just extending it a bit.
Yeah, we just need to know if that headhouse was put in legally or not, uh, because, you know, um, we just cannot inadvertently be approving something that, you know, so anyway, go ahead, um, go ahead, the board members.
So, yeah, can, can we go to the headhouse floor plan? I'm just trying to figure it out.
Can I interject for one moment? This is Holly O'Brien.
No, please, everybody.
The, the headhouse...
Hold on, everybody. Let's get an understanding on this.
How far is that headhouse setback from the case of the building?
Currently, it's about, I think, 16 feet setback back.
Wait, just a sec. When was it built? I'm looking at 2014 Google map. Maybe it's the angle from the street, but it doesn't, it doesn't see it.
It's nearly impossible to see it from the street. Um, but Holly has more information on that.
Um, when my, my, when my grandparents bought this home, there was a cupola in, um, on the currently, there was a cupola, uh, in the, at 68 G Street, which is the exact mirror image. Um, these, um, headhouses or cupolas were access to other roofs. Um, so, you know, as being neighborly, um, we would allow access to other people's roofs because they did not have that. Uh, my grandparents could not afford to, um, in disrepair, so they kept the headhouse. So there were only two, um, units on this, uh, block that had that. And so if you look at Google Maps, you will see there's another, uh, cupola at 68 G Street which is in, in that building.
So, uh, is there going to be any expansion of the headhouse or is the headhouse just remaining like?
Um, no, we're going to expand it about, um, nine-ish feet.
But towards the...
To the back, not to the front.
For what purpose?
Yeah. To, because we're looking to put a proposed, uh, small roof deck over the addition for the third floor.
But why, but why expand the headhouse if, as long as you can access the roof deck from the current one?
It's not in great condition. Uh, it definitely needs to be rebuilt.
I guess about expanding, not repairing.
I want to, I want to put that...
Can I, can I, can I ask the board members, is it worth deferring this case until the applicant and her architect can coordinate, um, and figure out what's going on and help us figure out going on, what's going on? Um, let me just ask this to board members.
Uh, I think... I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
So board members, please, I need you to give me some advice on this.
Yeah, so I think that, um, I mean, it's clear to me what's being proposed, uh, you know, whether it's drawn accurately, it's another question, you know, I think would have helped to really show that at the front, the garden level is actually a little bit carved out at the front, you know, to allow light and air into that garden level. Um, I think the headhouse, you know, doesn't have to be that large. It could be a little bit more modest in terms of scale. So I think that's what's throwing it off, that it looks large. Um, there's a lot of kind of unused space that is being built at the headhouse. But it, you know, to me, it's, it's very clear what's being proposed.
Yep.
The, the question I have is, um, you know, one of the bedroom unit in the proposed basement level, like in terms of, you know, the floor-to-ceil height, what is that floor-to-ceil height? And then you have a window well, um, you know, what's the height to grade in terms of egress? You know, the ability for, for someone to, to get out of that bedroom. And so mine is an issue of safety. And then the other that the board members are asking is one of scale, which is, you know, the headhouse could be smaller.
So, so Devin, can you please be the one to respond and first respond to the basement and then second to the cupola or the headhouse?
Sure. Um, the garden level portion of the bottom unit, um, has windows in the rear. If you go down to the A 2.1 or 2.2 drawings, you can see all the windows that are full-sized for that unit.
Well, I mean, the buildings are attached on left and right, so the only way, there's only possibility of windows in front and back, right?
So there's, there's windows all along the side of the garden level unit and at the rear. Um, and then on 8.2, there's also a section of that egress window. The silver floor back there is about two feet and then it's less than three feet out onto grade.
Right. And so that you, so what you're calling, really, there's a garden level, which you have here labeled as low level, and then you have a basement level.
Yes.
And so to get out of the bedroom and the garden level, you would have, for an emergency, you would have to go to the side window to jump out, which, which is possible, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, there's full-size windows in the, in both back bedrooms.
Because it, it doesn't abut the next adjacent building.
There's, uh, there's actually a decent amount of space, um, from the rear of the building to the lot line. It's, I mean, uh...
Is it, is it walkout from the rear or does it grade change in a certain...
It's walkout and there's an existing passageway at the rear, to the street.
Uh, Ms. Parraza, is, uh...
There is a walkout. There's a, what's proposing, was proposed in the basement level at the rear, seems like there's a walkout. Uh, there's a door and then there's a egress well in the bedroom at the rear.
Yeah, on, on sheet A dash 1.0, there is a plot, um, architectural landscape plan that shows exactly where there's the stairs from the basement, the window well and the existing passageway.
So, and then in A 2.1, you can see that it's actually closer to the grade at the rear.
Yes.
And then you can begin to see the garden level window right above the walkout. And so that's, that's what, that was really my concern. Can someone get out from a bedroom and, and you can? So the answer is yes. And I think the applicant was just confusing garden level versus basement level.
Sure. And the, the, um, the mezzanine level currently on that lower level is already living space. It's just not in great condition.
And tell us then, uh, speak to Ms. Parraza's, uh, comment about the headhouse and scale.
So it, maybe, I, I think the, my client would want maybe, um, like a space to put a couch up there for some living area, maybe a nice sitting area. Um, but if it was necessary to make the headhouse a little smaller, I'm sure she would be, not be completely opposed to that. Um, I just, the headhouse definitely needs to be enlarged a bit. It's not full head height. It's very tight. Um, I've been up it myself and I was crouching the whole time, uh, and it needs to be redone. It's not in great condition. But if the size is an issue, I'm sure we can do something about that.
Yes, we're fine with it built, meeting building code requirements, but, but not fine with it being, um, you know, more space than just access space to that roof deck. Okay, um, is anyone here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Marahopee, chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support based on good community process and feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. It is also our understanding that the only, that the, that only the proponent will have access to the roof deck and we ask that they continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase in any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a whole raised hand.
Okay, so give that information. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review paying special attention to the size of the headhouse and its setback in order for it to not be visible from G Street and to also pay attention to the materiality of the headhouse so it works with its con... So it works with its context.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling next case, calling BOA 1203941, 903 to 909 Massachusetts Avenue. There's no construction change from a taxi parking lot to a bus parking lot. Violation Article 5632. Houston regulation, bus servicing and storage is a conditional use in an IDA sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Stephen Miller from McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street. As the secretary said, we're seeking approval to actually go back to the prior use. This, this was approved for a taxi dispatch and servicing and storage of taxis in 2018. Prior to that, it was a bus, storage, dispatch and servicing. And we want to go back to that. The, it's a conditional use. I just introduce Nick Suzola from my office is on. Eric Waggonen, who's the president of We Drive You, who's the tenant. And their vice president and assistant general counsel, Deanna McCollion, is also on with me. This is a conditional use. There's no work to be done. We have gone through the process. We are working with the BPD A and with the BTD on the, on the site and the access and egress to the site. It's been an ongoing process. I think Jeff Hampton can speak to that, that we're still working with them. But as I said, We Drive You is a national, it's a subdivision of National Express. They have the largest fleet of electric vehicles in the country. And they've been in Boston for eight years. They currently service universities, hospitals and corporations.
So let me ask you, do they run the Moscow buses?
Uh, no.
No? So who, so they, do they have any property there or any rentals there or any presence in Roxbury along Melnea Cass, along Melnea Cass?
No, this is there, this is the, this will be their hub site for Boston.
And who owns the property?
Oxford Capital owns the property. John Adair, who's one of the principals, is also on the, on his call.
Okay. Okay, so, and how many buses are we anticipating here?
So we're anticipating 70, but once again, we're working with the BPD A and BTD for further final access and egress to the site and the final plan. So that we assume that would be a proviso if the board was to approve this conditional use.
And this is buses for rent, right? Rentals?
Well, they're.
Would they be on contract?
They're on, they're contract. They're, everything they have is contract. They're not going out on rentals. This is in and out or whatever. They go out for universities, as I said, hospitals and corporations. This is not a rental.
And tell us how the staff parking is proposed to work?
They're planning on busing their staff to the site.
From where?
From other areas around the city, I guess. They'll have, they'll have a, a site where, where people, they could pick them up at the, at Rapid Transit or whatever. But they're planning to bus them to the site.
Okay, and these are all electric buses?
Oh, they, they're not all electric buses, but they, they are heading in that direction. They have the largest fleet of electric vehicles in the country now and they're heading in that direction.
And can we see the screening and buffering plan and any trees that are proposed? Because this is a very hard area of the city. It could use some, some screening and buffering input.
So we've been, it's under discussion with the BPD A along with the, as I said, the access and egress. So it'd be something that would be, we have discussed it with the New Market Business Association. And it's something that I think when we finalize the access and egress with the BPD A, the next step would be the buffering and the security for the site, the cameras and the lighting, et cetera.
And is this part of the proposed bid plan for, for internal traffic in, within the New Market bid? Or is this entirely separate? No, it's not. You, you don't, you don't look like you know how to speak.
Right, so, so the answer, I guess, is no.
Okay, okay. So how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gans from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. An abutter's meeting was held June 23rd, in which they answered any questions and concerns of any of the abutters. And on June 2nd, as they had stated, they had met with the New Market Business Association. We'll ask you again.
You're on record here, Jason.
They're saying that there's a letter on file from New Market supporting the project.
Yes, if I did see that.
Madam Chair, this is Joe McGeckham with City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
All right, sorry for that issue.
Do you want to repeat?
Yes, sorry, technology. So I just want to go on record in support of this proposal. An abutters meeting was held on June 23rd, in which they answered any questions or concerns of the abutting neighbors. And also on June 2nd, they had met with the New Market Business Association, in which they gave their support, only asking that any applicant in the area have 24/7 street-facing cameras, which they have agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, did you get my?
No, Joe, go ahead, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Joe McGeckham with City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just clarify one thing that Mr. Miller misspoke about? There was a direct question from you, Madam Chair. If you, if you want me to, I can.
Yes, please clarify.
Very quickly, so the, the national, We Drive You would not be busing employees. That, that was one option, but that's not necessarily potentially going to be the case. We're going to, they will highly, be highly encouraged to use public transit to get to the site. But if they're not able to use public transit, they would be parking on the premises in the place of the actual buses that they are driving. So it would be a one-in, one-out. And I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Apologies on that.
Thank you, no problem. So.
Madam Chair, secretary here, I just have a quick question. Obviously, this is right down the street from 1010 Mass Ave where we are right now. But I'm looking at the Google Maps right now. And there is screening and buffering on Mass Ave, but on the side street, it doesn't seem like there is. I'll take a quick look at it.
I was gonna, I was gonna try and continue to push that needle on screening and buffering because this tends, this still continues to be a heat island. And so, you know, the temperatures in a heat island can be up to eight degrees warmer than other places. And so should this pass, you know, we need to have significant screening and buffering, not the, what appears to be just a light touch. So may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a BPD A designer due to screening and buffering. BPD A designer doing buffering and buffering. And for them to come back in two years to show.
Okay, that's a smart idea. Is, is there a second?
A second, add motion, secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I might, if I might, Madam Chair.
Hold on, hold on. Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I did the taxi before and the busing. There's never been a two-year limit on this and this would be difficult for them to make their plans with an idea to come back in two years.
We assume that, we assume that they by then will be running a top-notch operation, that it would just be above a stamp on our, on our end. Because we are seeing that more and more, for example, the bus lot at the intersection of Melnea and Washington, they have just too far, too many buses just idling. So there, this is a reason for us to just get a double check. After that, we'll take it from there. So Mr. Hampton, can you make sure there's significant screening and buffering? Because when it's hard car like that, it's just hard to keep a space cool.
I will.
Yep, thank you. Next case, please.
Calling next case, calling BOA 1197612, 10 North Hampton Street. There's no proposed construction. Commonwealth Community Care currently leases the space as office space. They would add a clinic to their approved uses. The tenant occupies this space as well as the building next door at 30 North Hampton Street and have received a change of use for the clinic in 2015. Violation Article 5632, the use of clinic is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Corey, 51 Marshall Road, Milton, Massachusetts.
I didn't hear that as a two-year buy.
One second, make sure everyone's muted.
Two years, five years screening above them. So it's helpful when we talk to them.
I just read it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I would.
Trying to mute everyone, I'm sorry about that. It's hard to see who it was. Go ahead.
Miss, can we hear from the applicant? Mr. Miller, can you please mute yourself unless you're, unless you're here on behalf of the applicant?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, please, I apologize.
No problem.
Can you need me to help on that?
Mr. Masterson, are we good?
I think we're good, yeah, yep.
Okay, can I hear from the applicant, please? Put your name and address on the record.
Yes, Chris Corey, one of the owners of 10 North Hampton Street, North Hampton Realty Corporation, 51 Marshall Road, Milton, Massachusetts, 02186.
So please tell us what's being proposed.
Sure. We're seeking adding a clinic use, conditional use here to this building's current office use. Commonwealth Community Care, the tenant, has been our tenant here for the last almost six years. They're also our tenant next door at 30 North Hampton Street. They're in need of additional clinic space due to the expansion of their primary care practice. We have no proposed construction as part of this approval process. We've reached out to the Worcester Square Neighborhood Association and also Sue over at New Market Business Association in regard to this proposed change. And we have received letters of support from them.
So tell us, since, since, tell us what exactly is, is going to be happening on this site?
So currently, they've used this space for the last six years as flex office space. And, you know, in the year 2021, they've been, you know, rebranding and expanding their primary care practice. And, you know, due to a lot of their employees, even pre-pandemic, working remotely and even, you know, more so now, they would like to be able to use some of this area for, for, as part of their primary care practice next door. For instance, you know, having specialists come into a larger area where they're able to meet with multiple patients, like, you know, podiatry or cardiologists, immunization clinics, things of that nature that don't work well in a traditional exam room and waiting room setting. So they're just trying to get better use out of this, you know, space that they already occupy. And that's a little more insight into what they're looking to do here. There was some early misconception of, you know, substance abuse clinic and some concern from the neighborhood about that. But, which you'll see in the support letters. And that's definitely not something we're looking to do here. Under any circumstances, this is going to be really a primary care, support, you know, space for their practice next door at 30 North Hampton Street.
Okay. And what would their hours of operation be?
They are nine to five, Monday to Friday.
Okay. And tell us about the parking.
There's 47 spots on site here. Most of their patients are, you know, are come via the ride or other, you know, van services to transport. So, but they do have 47 spaces on site here. And they do have parking next door at 30 North Hampton Street. So definitely no issues with, with parking.
And you guys also own 30 North Hampton, right?
That is correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Sorry, Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? And I'm assuming, Mr. Corey, you did hear about our questions about screening and buffering just down the street at 903 909 Mass Ave?
I did just hear about that, yes.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kim Crusoli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal under the conditions that it is not used for recovery services. And an abutters meeting was held by our office on June 23rd, where there was no opposition from the abutters. They also received letters of support under those same terms from Worcester Square Neighborhood Association and the New Market Business Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have those letters that the Mayor's office just spoke of.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that it's just for clinic use only.
So clinic use only and fencing and, and design review for fencing and screening at the sidewalk line?
What is, what does for clinic use only mean?
It's not, yeah, it's primary care, it's primary care use. Does that answer your question, Ms. Regeria?
Yep.
Okay, so it's primary care use and design review for fencing and screening at the sidewalk. Is there a second?
Second, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, don't fade on me, guys.
Thank, thank you very much. I also just wanted to make sure that it's a clinic and office, so we maintain that office use in addition to the clinic use.
Yep, and just make sure when I drive by, I see that screening and buffering up, okay?
Yes, yeah, thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1101900, 123 Tepestry. This is a change of, including cannabis establishment. The applicant also proposes to modify the existing layout and conditions of the interior of the building. Violation Article 59, Section 18. Cannabis establishment use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, One International Place, Prince Lobal. I'm here on the call with the head of Raisas on the Hill. Raisas means roots in Spanish. And that is Jeff Sanchez. I'm also here with David Lee, our architect. And Rafael Ruiz is our security consultant, former deputy superintendent. He had a hospital appointment, he's trying to call in. What we're trying to do here, Madam Chair, members of the board, is this is a 30,000 square foot lot in Mission Hill, in the local industrial section on Terrace Street, which is a street that's seeing a lot of activity right now. And the plan is to do. Um, and the plan is to do, uh, a cannabis use, uh, which is allowed by conditional use permit. There are no other buffer issues or any other, uh, variances or anything else associated with this. And the cannabis use would be one of three tenants, if you will, uh, in the building itself. Uh, this is a good site, just to show you. Well, my screen just went dead, but, um, we're, we're back. Uh, yeah, so on the left is a former CrossFit fit, fitness studio that's no longer active. Uh, in the middle would be the proposed cannabis, uh, use. And then on the right, uh, is a existing, uh, glass-blowing studio, uh, as it would happen, uh, called Diablo.
So is Diablo, Diablo's going to stay? Tell, is it going to stay?
Yeah, yeah, that was a very important, uh, condition that the community asked us to.
So if Diablo's staying, what is the square footage then for the cannabis use? Are you taking the CrossFit space and the retail space?
No, it would just be in that middle space there. It's about 3,000 square feet, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it's 3,000 square feet?
Uh, just about, about 2840 is the number I have.
Okay, and, uh, of course, can you chalk us through everything? Particularly concerned about parking because you know, uh, Mr. Ross, you represented the owners next to, uh, the old Mississippi's, so you know how terrible that road is for parking? Um, so please talk us through, through this.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, currently, there isn't any formal parking at the site. What we're proposing is 10 parking spaces to the right of the building. As you can see in this, in this and then some of the other, uh, drawings below, this is an ex, you know, Terrace Street has, has a, a very steep hill behind it. So what you're doing is you're cutting into the hill to create parking. Uh, so we believe that we can comfortably put 10 parking spaces on the site. You'll note that to the left of the building, there is capacity, uh, to maybe come back at a later time and add parking if, if we need it. But, um, right now, we're committing to 10 parking spaces on site. We've also worked with Mission Hill Neighborhood Services to put money towards a traffic study, right, on this street, uh, and, uh, that was a big part of the conversation, for sure. Um, in addition to the 10 parking spaces, we have a security plan that's been designed by, uh, Rafael Ruiz. Uh, we met with the police captain of B2 and we committed to, uh, with the Neighborhood Services, um, Fridays and Saturdays to have a police detail, um, for six months, uh, which, you know, the community requested and, and we agreed to. We also agreed to.
And so what would be the use of the police detail? Is that for security or for traffic?
It's both, but it's probably in the end, it's going to wind up being much more around traffic and logistics and keeping people moving and, and that type of thing. Uh, because we are going to have two security guards, one in the front, where before people enter the building, at the lower right-hand corner of the building, and then, uh, one inside. And we'll, we will always have at least one, uh, or two security guards at all times. Uh, the queuing will all take place inside as well. And it's kind of interesting the way we've set up the Diablo relaxes. People coming into the facility will queue alongside a giant window where they'll see this, these artisans who've been on the street for many years, blowing glass, uh, and it will give them something to do while they're waiting. I mean, there's not as many lines these days for the cannabis establishments as there used to be when they first opened. But even still, it's nice to tie the two uses and be able to preserve that use. The hours of operations, Madam Chair, we agreed to, uh, reduce them at the request of Mission Hill Neighborhood, Housing Services. Uh, they will be nine to eight, Monday through Saturday, and they will be 11 to six on Sundays. Uh, and then maybe my last point, and I'll pause to see if there's questions. This is very unique, um, I haven't seen this, I don't think the board has seen this. This group is agreeing to give 10% of its net profits back to the Mission Hill Neighborhood. As I mentioned, the word Raisa.
I mean, I, I, you know, whatever your private discussions are, we don't need to know about that. We kind of just need to focus entirely on whether this is an appropriate land use and if this is an appropriate site for this land use.
That's right.
And, and how to make it work, given the narrowness of the street, um, given the volume of traffic, given, because let's just see, the, uh, the brewery, or the building down the street to this board, there are three buildings under construction, um, that are supposed to have artists' live, live workspace happening on that street. Um, on the other side of Mississippi's, up that slope, there's supposed to be another, um, I don't know.
Sixty, I think about 60 units there, yeah.
Yeah, 60 units up there, and then the proposal that you came in with on the, on this side of Mississippi's, um, I don't know how many units were there.
About 30, I believe about 30, maybe 39.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're anticipating, you know, a good, close to 130, 140 units going up on that street. And of course, there's lost some building materials and there's that, um, automotive shop at the corner that, um, you know, does some of its business on the street. So, you know, it's, it's very complicated. So, so, long story short is, we just need to figure out if this is an appropriate land use for this, this spot. Um, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, Molly Griffin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Um, there was a butters meeting held on March 9th, 2020. The applicant has completed community outreach to maintain that communication with the neighborhood. Uh, they entered a good neighbor agreement with Mission Hill Neighborhood Services on June 7th, 2021, and they've also offered their support, so at this time, they'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Lauren Brody from City Council, Kenzie Box Office. Councilor Bach is in support of the applicant. Raisas has a strong ownership team that is majority Latinx and are deeply embedded in Mission Hill specifically and local, and local communities of color. The applicant is committed to an open line of communication regarding any issues at the site and has proposed an annual community contribution of 10% of net profits to be distributed to local groups and causes after consultation with local community members. The applicant has also committed to help improve the conditions on Terrace Street. There are no buffer zone conflicts. MHNHS, as Attorney Ross said, is in support as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one letter of support.
Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. Um, Terry, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Terry Delworth and I live at 153-155 Cedar Street. So I'm about two blocks from this proposed drug house, because that's what we see it as up here. They claim that there was outreach to the community, I didn't hear anything about this, and I can see the location from where I live. Now, they're claiming that they want to provide a, a bribe, because that's what it is, to the neighborhood. We do not need a drug-dealing location here, dispensary, whatever you want to call it. We've spent eons in this neighborhood trying to get rid of that stigma of Mission Hill Roxbury being a drug spot, it being, you know, a rundown area. So why are we throwing back a drug place here? This is not the area for it. There are plenty of undeveloped commercial areas that this could be lit, this could be placed in, but our neighborhood is not that place for this. I'm, I'm sorry to say it, but I'm totally against this. I don't care how many political, you know, pawns you want to throw into the game and say, oh, this, this counselor is in favor of that one. I live here, I see the results of the drugs usage. I had a drug bust right next door to me at 145, 149 Cedar one night. I also had a home invasion because of drug usage and drug sales there. So something like that, when it's going to fly up the street to my neighborhood and affect me and those around me, that is a big problem. I don't care what people think money is, if it's so necessary, put it over in South Bay. There's plenty of areas over there that it can be hosted in.
Thank you. And, um, David, um, I can make, know that you have an issue with the raised hand function. Are you looking to speak, um, give testimony for this proposal?
Uh, yes, Ms. Thompson.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is David E. Minot II, 166 Terrace Street, Unit 410, Roxbury Crossing, O2120.
Okay, go ahead.
I've had up the tenants committee here, and I have not found a single resident that is in favor of this project. We have six dispensaries within two miles of this location. And Terrace Street has been the target of quite a bit of development, as been pointed out already, in recent years. It's a tiny street, um, not much more than half a mile long, very narrow, little parking space, um, no crosswalks, uh, no speed bumps, and we already have a plethora of cars flying through here during rush hours in the morning and the nighttime. And also, we don't have enough pa- parking. Our own owner, Wind Management, proposes to build a huge parking lot on our lot. Um, so in regards to the dispensary, uh, we don't welcome the additional traffic. We don't have the parking to accommodate it. And tenants, both young and old, um, with children and without, are, um, opposed to the project.
Thank you.
By myself.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. I'm sorry, oh, pocket, the one that just came in, Matthew, are you looking to speak in support or opposition for this proposal? Hi, we, I can't hear you.
I am, but I just, um, not connected to you.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, sorry, buddy. No additional raised hands, proposal.
Madam Chair, um, Matthew Saintong is the direct butter across the street from us. Um, there are no other direct butters. I believe he was coming on to speak in support.
Okay, yes, um, yes, um, and then, um, couple more questions. When is delivery of product to your site scheduled?
That would be, uh, early morning, uh, it would be during, um, uh, non-peak hours every time. Uh, there's a separate entrance for the delivery of product, uh, separate and secure. Uh, that would be, uh, through the back or through the back corner of the facility.
And is there any, uh, thought of online ordering?
We do anticipate about 50% of our customers to utilize online, online ordering. There's a lot of people who, um, live in Mission Hill, who don't have cars, who live behind us, who will be living on Terrace Street, um, who we anticipate will be, uh, walking, and that's why we're, uh, investing so much money in the pedestrian realm in front of there. Uh, one comment, Madam Chair, on the, on the traffic and on the parking, is, as I mentioned, this is a over 30,000-square-foot site, and I, I don't need to tell the members of the board just how many units of housing, uh, could go on this site.
So, no, 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 we know that this is zoned LI, so we know that this is zoned local industrial, and all these residential uses have slowly cracked into this area, you know, so, yeah, you know, so let's just take this on face value, okay? Um, so let's see, um, any other questions from the board? We have another call-in user, and then I'd like Mr. Sanchez, because I noticed that he is on, um, to speak if he could.
Do you want me to go back to the testimony, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect, all right. I have two people who are looking to give testimony. And Adit, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Arne Dvadi. I am a resident at 166 Terrace Street, on, because they're going to be 02120.
Okay, go ahead. Are you speaking?
Express my, hi, I wanted to express my opposition for this project. Can you hear me still?
Yes, you were coming in and out.
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, thank you, we heard off your opposition. Anybody else, uh, Ms. Ambassador?
Caller 63, um, 201290, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, sorry, I was connected on two systems, I, I can disconnect.
Okay, thank you, um. See if anyone else raised their hand. Okay, I think we're all set with the raised hands, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board, um, for all your commitment and everything. I mean, this has been a long day and you've had, you have a lot of proposals before you, and I appreciate the time that you've given, um, to our proposal today. Um, as Mike mentioned, um, it's called hyysis for a reason. All of us come, all of us that are involved in this, the majority, the, the majority stakeholders that are part of this, we all have right roots in this community, myself. Um, I spent my, my, pretty much my entire life, my mother lives on that street.
So, 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 Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Sanchez, I just need to figure out from you, are you involved with the project, any other, any other projects? Any other cannabis projects?
No, this is, this is the only, this is the only project that I'm invested in, that I'm invested in here in Mission Hill. It's, and I haven't, we, I did the community process myself, I collected over 300 letter, expressions of, of support.
I entirely get it, the, the thing that we need to ensure is that this is a, a, a street in transition, that it transitions into a better place rather than a worse place. Um, and we just kind of need to hear a little bit about how you're going to help make that happen.
So I, I myself have been a part of this, this work on Terrace Street, my, pretty much my entire life. And you're right, it was one of these streets that was abandoned, but it, it, the changes of uses relative to housing has been a part of the city's housing boom. At the same time, this, this street has also provided opportunity for, for changes of uses as well, as we see with, with building, the building materials co-op, as well as with down the street, there'll be a couple of extra straw fronts that are in the, uh, that are coming up in the, in the new developments. And, and the possibilities for that street are really, are really positive. And that's why we committed ourselves to working with the people, with, with other organizations that own, entities that own properties on that, on that street, so that we can try and deal with, what can we do relative to traffic on it? It's not perfect, but this street, like so many other streets, are facing the same amount of change and growth, you know? We're not that, that, that tiny place anymore, you know? And, and so, we're, there's two things, it's the commitment, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, for, for, my fellow board members, this is the second cannabis, um, proposal we had today. I think we've covered all the questions we generally ask. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a VPDA design review.
And can we have this as we usually do?
This applicant only.
This applicant only, um, okay.
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Tom, I hate to interrupt, but I think, um, Member Barazza might be having some connectivity issues.
Okay, no, it's, uh, thank you for interrupting, because we want to make sure everybody's voice is on the record. Um, so the proposal is for approval with design review, this applicant only. Um, Jeff, please make sure that this ends up, uh, looking pretty, I mean, Jeff Hampton, that as good as it can. Uh, is, is Ms. Barazza on?
Can't tell, Madam Chair, looks like she might not be.
Fonzie, are you back on? No, she's not.
Looks like she's not coming on, Madam Chair.
Fonzie, the, uh, motion is for approval with VPDA design review and to this applicant only. Um, okay, so there's a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very much.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the last case for 11 o'clock, calling BOA 121-6892, 35 Rantry Street. This is 149 rental units, including 25 of the IDP units on various sizes at four out of. This is 149 rental units, including 25 of the IDP units, on various sizes, at four artist live-work lock units. A violation of Article 51, Section 19, artist mixed-use live-work unit is forbidden. Article 51, Section 19, multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 20, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 20, the building height is excessive. Article 51, Section 20, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 20, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, is anyone on for that proposal? Didn't have them checking earlier.
Yes, Madam Chair, it should be Attorney Hanley. Attorney Hanley, are you on there? We can't hear you.
Hanley? I don't see that name.
Yeah, Joe's at the top.
Is he in the attendees section? I don't see.
He was just there. He was there, maybe trying to get back on.
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Azul, I apologize. Attorney Hanley is having technical difficulties, he's coming right back on now. I know you've had a long day. If you don't mind holding with him for 30 more seconds, he will be back on, I apologize.
I was kicked out by accident. So maybe it's randomly kicking people out.
This is Secretary, Madam Chair, sorry about that. Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Colte Miller, how are you?
Please go ahead, we're getting a little bit weary, so please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for the technical issue. So, again, for the record, Attorney Joe Hanley, 28 State Street, Boston. I think Nick might have introduced our client, but I will, actually, since he didn't. So I have David Andronico and Matt Fraser from Jones Street Investment Partners, who's the proponent. I also have Mark Eclipse from PCA Architects. Just to give you a really quick overview, Madam Chair, this site, which is shown on pages five through seven in this presentation, is an existing industrial warehouse, a single-story building, on about a half an acre, in the Braintree Street local industrial LI1 sub-district. Importantly, it's also in the guest street planning study, which has been underway and contemplates the type of use that we're proposing. It also runs directly along the Mass Pike and the tracks of the MBTA. It abuts Track 75, which is a recently approved residential development to the left. And to the right is a development site that runs along the Ace Ticket Building all the way to the Depot. So the project overview, very briefly, this is an Article 80 large project that was approved by the VPDA on May 13th of 2021. It's a new mixed-use, mixed-income, healthy and sustainable development. 149 units on seven stories. 12 of those units are three bedrooms in excess of 1,000 square feet, four are artist units. 17% of them are income restricted, in excess of the IDP. Of that, 50% are three bedrooms, and 20% are two bedrooms. So majority of the IDPs are family-sized housing. There's also a portion that is compact living. And Madam Chair, I know you don't want to hear about the process necessarily, but.
So, please tell us, so, so, hold on, hold on, hold on. So we have 12 three bedrooms at 1,000-plus units, how many two bedrooms?
So, 18. So if you looked at page three, Madam Chair, page three will show you the unit mix. So, there are four live-work units. There are 82 studios, 21 compact one-bedrooms, 12 standard one-bedrooms, 18 standard two-bedrooms, and 12 standard three-bedrooms.
So of the 149 units, 103 of them are compact units then?
Correct, but a, a good amount of them are, you know, standard size, and also three-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So all of the affordables.
No, I, I think, I think, no, no, hold on, I think I'm looking at this chart correctly. It talks about compact studios, 82 compact studios and 21 one-bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay, so just so that we know that the majority of the proposal is compact dwelling, a compact unit. And then these lofts are, look like they're the equivalent, they straddle between the standard one-bedrooms and the standard two-bedrooms, okay? And then you have three bedrooms, okay? So now, so now, let's, so that, now that we know that these are a bunch of compact units, talk to us about the shared space and what's proposed for the shared space.
Yeah, if I may too, I mean, 42 of these are full-size, and all of the full-size are larger units. So we worked very hard with both neighborhood groups and the city councilor. I'm very aware, just want to say this, of this board's concern about compact living. This is a totally different mixed-income, mixed-use, work development. The other thing I'll just note, the location here, we're not near Boston Landing, we're at Boston Landing, in industrial area that has been contemplating this type of growth through the planning study. So we have, we also have, if you look on the slides, and I think you asked about the amenity space, that's a good point. We are very much aware of creating a family-based, mixed variety of housing and workspace for artists. And I'd like to ask Mark Eclipse, excuse me, from PCA to tell you a little bit more about the amenity program. Mark?
Thanks, Joe. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Eclipse with PCA Architects. So if you could go to page nine, please. We're talking about the amenity space, even starting to the left, just because I know that this has been mentioned, we do have an off-street loading zone for residents, sort of far left of the parking, you can see in the upper, upper-left side. That's a loading space that's off the street for residents. So then moving over to the right side of the plan, that's all amenity space on the ground floor, which is next to the four artist live-work locks. So along with that, really animate that street and make it a really lively streetscape. If you mind going down a little bit, we have an enlarged plan, so you can see what all the spaces are. And really picking up on the artists that could live here and live in the area, there is an artist gallery on the first floor, not just a lobby, because I think a lot of times you end up calling the lobby a gallery. So that is a lobby, that is a gallery for artists. But there is a separate space, you can see right behind the elevators, that is securable to have artist shows, where artists can put their work and leave it and not worry about it, walking off. But also, it's open to the street with glass all on the street, so passersby can look into that lobby. Past that, there's a large package space, we know that that's becoming an issue, onsite management office. And then right in the middle, on the opposite side of the elevators there, is a flexible space for residents to gather. I think it's called conference, but it could be a workspace, conference room, a place to gather.
Excuse me, Ms. Edwards, can you zoom in some more, please?
Actually, if you scroll down a little bit in that page, there is an enlarged plan, right there.
Okay.
You can see our management office, the conference room, which could be used by management, could be used by all of the residents. An open mailroom, where residents would gather and grab their mail before they go off to the, to the elevators and up. And then 150 bike spaces just above this. If you could go to the next page, please. So this shows a second floor general layout of the building, it stacks all the way up. But in that lower corner, right on the second floor, there is an amenity space. And so we have amenity spaces on the first floor, second floor, and the seventh floor, distributed throughout. And we're calling this an artist space or a maker space, that the artists could use, because in their smaller units, they need a space to make and create their art. But this is a big space, it could be messy, not just the artists could use it, but people could use it for crafts, or whatever the other residents want to use, it's a place where people could gather and have paint nights. We think it's a really great space to create community, for everybody to come together. If you go to the next page, please. So this is our top floor. So you can see the dark orange is indoor space, the light bright orange is outdoor space. So there's an outdoor roof deck with a bit of a view over to the skyline of Boston. But within this space, we really thought about, again, how everybody would live and make things very usable for all the residents. So rather than creating one big open space, we actually have made it very usable for multiple groups of people to use at the same time. So there's smaller spaces where people could have private get-togethers or work. There's some more loungy spaces in the middle, where, again, you could have two groups of people who would come together. So a lot of times what happens with big spaces, one person sits down at the couch and they've taken over the whole room. So we sort of partitioned it off a little bit, so you could flow sort of between game room in the back to relax, and then there's a kitchen space, again, where a lot of seating right around that counter, so people can gather in the kitchen. And that's right off of the roof deck, which just gives a little bit of outdoor space up there. So that is our amenity space.
Very, very much district-driven, if you will, Madam Chair, being in an area that is transitioning from industrial. We're also dealing with the fact that we're immediately by toxic emissions from a major highway and a major rail line. So obviously, it wouldn't be appropriate to have an abundance of outdoor space. And as a result, this project is dedicating more than a dollar a square foot to invest in one of the public parks, called Pennington Park, only a block away. And that'll make a significant impact in addition to the artist programming. This is a node where artists have been in the past, and they were in sponsored facilities. Obviously, Washington Austin being the name of Austin and Artis, there is a lot that is germane program.
So, Mr. Hanley, so you've talked about the parking, and of course, there's onsite loading. You've talked about the open space. Let's just see, I, can we have the view, the street view of this proposal, please, Ms. Edwards? Can we see from, this is from the.
That's from the pipe.
Go to page 20.
Braintree.
Page 19, believe it? Yeah, page 19, Madam Chair, well, there you have it. And so what you're seeing there is a widened sidewalk. The zoning requires, this is in excess of the zoning. We are exceeding both the side and front yard aspects of the zoning. And I think Mark can speak to that back, but also making way, you know, Dave, for improved connectivity.
So that's a narrow sidewalk, so, but can you tell us where the private property begins then?
Currently, the property line is seven feet back from the curb line, and we are building a setback of another five feet. So the total sidewalk width will be 12.
Okay, so that the proposed overhang is on private property then?
Correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question for the architect. Did you consider adding additional amenity spaces on floors three, four, five, and six?
I mean, through the whole process, of course, we look at everything, but we thought that having it at the top and having it at the bottom, sort of equally distributes it and makes it easier to get to from the middle. And having it a little more concentrated did make some sense, just to get sort of a density of people, you know, to gather.
Okay, and is the building using carbon-free energy sources for heating and cooling?
The heating and cooling is completely carbon-free?
That's it, thank you for that question. One of the things that we worked really hard on, so you speak about development sustainability, where we have solar PV ready on the roof, that's something that needs to be required, that is B-ready, adaptable. We have it from day one. We have a electric heat and hot, heat and cooling system, which is a part of that sustainability program. Technology's not really there yet 100% for hot water, but we have a system that is adaptable once it becomes there in order to go to the net zero threshold. In addition to the 17%, this is a healthy and sustainable budget, if you will.
So, you know, my only feedback is that I'm looking for what's the overall community benefit for proposing density on the site. And given that you're not really doing outdoor spaces for the residents, I'm looking for additional kind of breakout spaces. Like, I really enjoyed the fitness room in the earlier, but it seems like the fitness room as an amenity, you know, disappeared in order to cater more to the artists, you know, in terms of amenity. But I would just recommend that you think about, if you're not offering outdoor space, you know, what can be a benefit for the residents, you know, 100-plus that are living in this building? Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate your question, and maybe would encourage if you look at the overall factor here. But we're trying to achieve many masters, right? We're in an area that needs recovery. The section between Cambridge and Everett Street is long distressed or along a pipe. We're introducing a type of housing that is critically necessary, and the chair had dedicated for that being three- and four-bedroom homeownership, but also the transition for smaller units. I will say too, as part of the Article 80 process, and germane to your question, over $2 a square foot is being invested. As I said, 100,000 in Pennington Park, which will make major, major impact, as well as funding for the Austin-Ryden mobility study, as well as.
Now, you know, he, so, so, hold on, Mr. Hanley, you know, I, can you please go back to the artist live-work space and tell us how large those units are? Because I appreciate that they are not bang up against the rail yards, but how large are those spaces? And I appreciate that they're on the first floor, so hopefully they can bear additional loads beyond that of a desk and a chair. So there could be some creative work going on in there. But can you just speak to us about the size of that space?
They, I heard, they average 739 square feet, they're actually on two floors, that may not, might not be clear. At the ground floor, I think having it on two floors truly makes it live-work. But the ground floor can be live, but also could be a place where you could be more of a workspace, and then there's a separate space up above. It's an average of 739, it ranges from 652 up to 889. There's four total.
So 652 to 889?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Can you please clarify how many units are actually 397 square feet? Because reviewing your plans, your studio size, you had a lot of them at 397, and very little at 410.
I'm not sure the total, I don't look it up.
But I would say majority of your studio sizes are 397, and typically 450 is preferable.
Yes, so those, if I may, those, that's the compact component, and this is where it gets a little bit new. bit nuanced, right? This is not a compact, all-compact development. As we said, 42 units are full-size, 12 of which are over 1,000 square feet of three-bedroom housing.
Mr. Hanley. Mr. Hanley, two-thirds of the units are compact living. So let's not, let's be clear about that.
Mr. Ohler, thank you.
Are compact.
But we're trying to address the need of.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. So that means the whole policy that the city imposed around compact living was, in order to have undersized units, there has to be a corresponding amount of amenities that would make up for that for community and shared space. So, you know, I just want to be clear about this. It's not like you're doing anybody any favors. In order to have undersized units, you have to have all the space. You're not doing any outdoors space for reasons that you elaborated on. I'm not sure if I agree, but anyway. So I think the issue is that there's an awful lot of small units and not an enormous amount of shared space. And, you know, that's just.
But I respond, Mr. Ohler, so the, obviously, we are following the city, you all, right, wrote the compact pilot. We are following and complying with it with respect to the amenity space. So we are not looking to be excused from that, right?
So, so may I, sorry, may I give you guys a hint? You know, it might be helpful for you to know about our concerns about the project that just happened around the corner on Cambridge Street about these compact spaces. And then, you know, my gut reaction is that then we have these compact spaces right bang smack against those rail yards. I can't imagine what the turnover is going to be and how this helps create community. Those residents won't be able to actually open their windows comfortably, even living in these tiny spaces overlooking a rail yard. You know, maybe that worked, you know, a hundred years ago in certain spaces, but we try to acknowledge that, you know, the health ramifications and the other ramifications need to be addressed. And we can't go ahead and continue pushing things that are going to create physical and mental health problems.
Yeah, and I had the opportunity to look at Cambridge Street. One thing that I will tell you is very different is that it's a project that didn't experience or receive community planning. There's so much in this. We were asked by the district city councilor, the PDA, the mayor's office. Both neighborhood groups enthusiastically supported this. The IHG support it because we're doing something totally different. And there are 42 families out there.
But I don't think, I don't think, sorry, go ahead. Ms. Hanley, don't, don't. So what you need to do is, obviously, you haven't clearly articulated to us how different it is. I mean, that's why we continue to push and push and ask you those questions. Tell us how it's different.
May I just add a couple things that, by the compact living standards, the requirement or common space is about 3,500 square feet, and we're at 7,500 square feet. So there's significantly more than required. And just, it has been, we know that it's been an issue talking about open space, but we didn't, the reason why we don't have more open spaces is that we didn't feel like this was an appropriate place for open space right on the tracks, that the significant contribution to the park would have a bigger impact on open space in the neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go and represent support of this proposal. As you heard from the applicant's representation, it was a very robust PDA-led process with input from both civic associations, artists, and butters. This is an area that is transitioning from light industrial to residential as a part of a broader plan for community planning that the PDA is enacting. It's also delivering 17% affordable, 17% IDP units, which is crucial for the neighborhood. And we think that compact living, compact living units are applicable in this area. You know, Austin does have a lot of younger renters that come in for a time, and this is an opportunity to free up some of the housing stock. They went to the Austin Civic Association, received their support. They also went to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, received their support as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Maura McCray from Councilor Braden's office. Councilor, I'd like to go on record as being in support of this project. We appreciate the time that the proponent has taken to work with the community, and we appreciate the level of affordability and the inclusion of the artist's work loss on site. Would also like to just say the councilor does think that the compact living pilot is an important option in our neighborhood, as long as it is balanced appropriately with other housing options. So as in the case of this project, it is part of the program here. It is not all of the program. We do think that people do look for smaller units, people in our neighborhood and elsewhere, and we do think it is an important option for people to have. And like I said, we appreciate that this project has included, has also included family-sized affordable units and the artist studios. Thank you.
Maura, I know that in the past, when we talked about these artist's live-work space, I did want to mention to you that it might have, I mean, sorry, compact living spaces, it might not have been called compact living, but I would suspect maybe seven to 10 years ago, this board approved small units, both in Fort Point and near the JFK stop on the Red Line. So if we want to see how these small units have worked, those might be good areas to check on. I did speak to somebody who works in the Fort Point, who lives in the Fort Point area. Her assessment was that most of those units ended up being Airbnb, and I think those were the very, very first small units after the BSA started pushing for these small units. Those were the very first built. Just, I know you are in the research mode and, you know, you bring a lot of value in your presentation, so I just thought I should share that with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, and a member of the IHG for this project. The BIA would like to go on record in support, and the IHG did work closely with the developer. One of the concerns was to actually make this a green building, and they really pushed on making it a green building and the artist's space. And they did want the smaller spaces so that the artist, a single artist could live alone but still be able to have space to work. I do share your concerns about too many micro-units. Braintree Street seems to be a more appropriate space for it. They can walk, and we are taking an industrial zone that isn't impacted by a heavy load of traffic going by it. So if there is a place that's appropriate, this is probably the location, and that's why we voted to support it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, do I raise hand? Anthony, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We would like to go on record in support. The membership was very happy to see the proponent be very receptive to concerns regarding unit mix, affordability, and sustainability. And as was stated in the presentation, those issues seem to have been addressed. We also, Madam Chair, share your concern about compact living, co-living units. I would tend to kind of side a little bit with Maura in the fact that we have to look at a balanced approach. We certainly don't want our community to turn into the primary experimental community when it comes to compact living. We're willing to do our share. We're willing to have a balanced approach, as I said, to use of units. However, I agree with you. We certainly don't want to be in a position where they're always coming to Austin-Brighton to do compact living.
Madam Chair, I have no additional reasons.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a PDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will put my voice in opposition because I do think that this is a wrong balance for a building banging out, being built right adjacent to the tracks. But motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Calling the next two cases we're discussing, calling DOA 1172-719-136 West 8th Street. There's a companion case, DOA 117-2724-138 West 8th Street. This is for 136 West 8th Street. Build new construction to reclaim a home in a vacant parcel land. Violation Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading. Article 68, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. This is for. 138 West 8th Street. Expand the existing single-family home located at 138 West 8th. New rear third-floor finished additions. Gut the renovated existing living spaces. The violation is Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restriction. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the side yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yards insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8.4, dimensional regulations, the extension into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Is there any representation for this project?
I don't see, they didn't check in earlier. I don't see any messages. Is it, hold on, is it Kyle? Oh, hold on, there's a couple of raised hands. Chris Vance, are you here for this proposal?
I am, yes. Actually, Kyle's having trouble getting.
Okay, yeah, okay, Kyle's in now. I just made him a panelist as well, sorry about that.
All right, excellent. He'll be speaking on behalf.
I can't hear you.
Are you able to hear Kyle?
So how about we come back to this case and move on to the next? Kyle, so that gives you a chance without the pressure of us waiting on you to adjust your technical issues, okay? So let's go on to Hansborough Street.
On DOA 117-3962, 28 Hansborough Street. This is seeking to erect a seven-unit residential dwelling and seven parking spaces. The violation is Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking and loading. Article 60, Section 8, multi-family dwellings used for business. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 60, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 60, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago at Drago and Toscano with an address of 11 Beacon Street. With me, I have the owner-developer Sat Sa and Eric Zacherson, who's the architect from Context. Just a point to note, the description has changed as the project has been modified. The new proposal is to erect a five-minute residential condominium building with six parking spaces that'll go along with those units. The layout of the plan, as you can see what you're looking at, it's a vacant parcel now. It's 4,000 square feet in the matapan area. The first floor of the project is going to have one unit, that would be a one-bedroom, one-bath, proposed, 675 square foot. That is an accessible unit right at the ground level. The first floor will also have partially covered, three parking spaces, two, three covered, two partially covered, and then one exposed in the rear. The, as you go up to the second floor, Unit 2 and 3, those would be one two-bedroom, one bath at 750 square feet. And then Unit 3, it's a two-bed, two-bath at 845 square feet. And then we go up to the third floor, which is our final level. That helps us, Units 4 and 5, that's a two-bed, one-bath at 750, and a two-bed, two-bath at 845. When we modified this project, we actually removed violations as well. So the violations that were removed, we're building heightened stories. Originally, we were proposing a four-story building. We modified that and working with the community down to three. We also removed height in feet. We were originally at 45 feet, and now it's 32, 35 is what's allowed. And we also took off the maneuverability violation. We have a 20-foot clearance for all of the parking spots to maneuver out of, and a 10-foot driveway along Southampton Street. The violations that do still stand, it is a 3F 5,000 area, we're proposing five units. Minimum lot size is five, we have four. Additional lot area, 2,500 per dwelling unit would be required. The FAR, although it has come down from 1.87, we're at 1.28, which is still over the 0.8 allowable ability. Front yard is modal, we're at 1015s required. Our side yard violation, we need it on the left side by 10 feet, which is what's required. Our right side is 3 feet 2 inches, which is actually a walking path that goes onto the rear yard. Rear yard required 30, 10 feet 6 inches, and open space 4149. I can answer any questions.
So the right side, you're just having a walkway, which is 3 feet 2 inches. How far is that building on that right side to you?
So that's about, that would be another about five, four or five feet away, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we are pretty close to the property line there, okay?
We have 10 feet on the left side.
Okay, and can, Ms. Edwards, can you show us the street view, please? How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? So that. So the blue building is the proposed building?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Is there, is there a roof deck? No roof deck, I assume?
No roof deck.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Don't take people's Neighborhood Services, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of the proposal on the, that's completed extensive community process beginning on October 29th, 2020, ended July 19th, 2021. extensive community process beginning on October 29th, 2020, ended July 19th, 2021. Through these meetings, run by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the app has made changes to their proposal with recommendations from the community, which include four to three stories, seven to five units, and increasing parking ratio. The Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support, again, of this proposal, which is an opportunity for home ownership. We would ask that the app can continue to address the concerns of the community, which include parking density and a lack of... Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner will have to the Council on Ray Campbell's office. We would like to go on record in opposition. The local civic group, Harvard Blueville Circle, along with some director butters are in opposition to this project, mostly due to density.
I wish I had no raised hands.
Hey, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Better oppose.
Better oppose, okay. I'm opposed too, but motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board.
Madam Chair, what would you like to do? Go back to West Eighth?
Kyle, is everything good with you? Ms. Ambassador, is everything working for Kyle Smith?
He was on early, let me just make sure. He should be able to come in himself.
So let's go to the last case, Mr. Fortune, or second to last case?
Sure. Calling case BOA 115-1073-365, Western Ave. This is to raise the existing one-story building and erect a new six-story, 57 units. Building with a total of five stackers, equals 10 cars, and 20 vice spaces, two handicap. Violations Article 29, Section 4, green belt protection overlay district. Article 51, Section 16, MFR use is conditional. Article 51, Section 17, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 17, excessive height. Article 51, Section 17, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 51, Section 56, insufficient parking. Article 51, Section 56, access maneuvering area. And Article 51, Section 57.2, front yard setback requirement. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCass, LaCass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. And also with me on the call is the project proponent principal, Joe Hassel. So this project is familiar to you. It was approved by the BPDA in August of 2020, and we appeared before this board last October. Since that time, we have gone back out to the community, back to the ACA and the BAIA, and addressed the issues of concern of this board, which were the number of studio units. So with that revision, a number of things have happened with the programming of the building. The building envelope itself remains the same, but the unit mix has been substantially changed. Do you want me to just focus on the new unit mix, or compare it to what it was?
Do comparisons, since this is a partial deja vu.
Okay. So Madam Chair, the prior proposal was 30 studio units, so 50% of the then 60 proposed, 25 one-bedrooms, and 10 two-bedrooms. The new proposal is much different. The new proposal takes into account the notion that a lot of people will be doing work from home, so we've combined some of the spaces. There are 14 one-bedroom units, 13 one-bedroom plus den slash home office, 10 two-bedroom units, two two-bedroom plus den, and four three-bedroom units, leaving us a balance of 14 studios, which is only 24% of the entire proposal. And the unit count has gone from 6 to 57 as a result of that reprogramming. In terms of the unit sizes, the studios are 450 square feet. The one-bedrooms are 625 to 730. The two-bedrooms are 850 to 990. And the three-bedrooms are 1050 to 1129. There are 10 IDP units that are being set aside, which comprises 17.5% of the total number of units. That is the original IDP commitment, and the proponent has agreed to maintain that, thereby increasing the minimum required IDP from 13 to 17.5. Couple other things that changed, there was on our prior zoning code refusal letter, citation for insufficient loading, so we've configured the garage to include a loading area, so that violation has been removed from the refusal letter. All of the other basic elements of the building remain the same. There's a side green area on the right side of the building, if you will, that is adjacent to the pocket park at the Telford condominiums right next door, so that space still integrates very well with the pocket park in the rear. Stop at the slide, perfect. There's the pocket park, and the side of our building, a little further back, you can see there's trees, and that's to integrate with the pocket park. There was an area behind the building, adjacent to the Telford condominiums, that we worked closely with that building to make sure there wasn't just a blank space, kind of hangout area, so that's been eliminated. At the garage level, the setback is only 6 inches to the rear of the Telford line, but then from the second floor up, the setback is 27 feet pulled away from the Telford. So that integrates nicely with how their rear yard is arranged as well. I can go through the zoning issues that are on the revised refusal letter, which is dated August 3rd. That is, we have green belt protection overlay applicability for design review, because it is within the distance of the Soldier's Field Road green belt. In the community commercial sub-district, the multifamily residential use is conditional, so we need a conditionally used permit for that. In terms of the dimensional regulations, excess FAR, the minimum for the CC is 1.0, this is a 3.3 proposed. The height max is 35, this is 67 proposed, which is consistent with the Charles Street building across the street. The rear yard setback, I've already just addressed. Insufficient parking, the code requires two per dwelling unit if there are 10 or more units. With the introduction of the stacker option to add 10 parking spaces, bringing us to 37 total, the parking ratio is .65, which is consistent with the Western Ave corridor study that is currently underway. The front yard setback, the minimum required in the sub-district code is 7 feet. What's proposed here is 12 feet, so we actually exceed the minimum required front setback, which is part of the request of the BPDA, given the Western Ave corridor study seeks to have much wider sidewalks in Western Ave. So our building is setback 12 feet from our lot line, then plus the sidewalk, so it allows for a rather large sidewalk here. So citation on the refusal letter is that thereby our building doesn't conform to the existing building alignment, but if we were to do that, we'd be pulling the building right up to the edge of the sidewalk, and that's contrary to the current planning principles.
I can't tell, do you have a roof deck up there?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a common roof deck, and that is the reason that we don't have a usable open space violation. The adjacent building has a deck as well, and that's, you know, one of the key features to satisfy the usable open space requirement is the common roof deck with two means of access. Shown there.
Mark, with a 3.3 FAR, are there any sustainability goals that the building's achieving? Because obviously, if you're using a roof deck, you can't put any PVs.
We do have solar panels that are going, there's one of the slides that shows solar panels next to the roof deck, along the roof edge. If you could scroll up to one of those slides. And Joe, are there any other items?
Yes, we will be planning, we have solar panels, as Mark mentioned, and then we'll be planning to use energy efficient appliances and sustainable materials and, you know, the latest insulation and things of that nature.
Is heating electric or gas?
Not 100% sure on that yet, but it most likely will be gas and a combination hydronic system, which is where the navi and boilers populate the air handlers as well. So it's a really efficient system that allows us to, at some extent, that's from mastaves as well, due to the energy efficiency of it.
Okay, and will there be any retail space on the bottom?
There is no retail space. It's a lobby entrance and the garage at the front of the building.
Okay, okay. Ms. Barazza, plans are good?
Yep, plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Calling a new one with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support of this proposal. After meeting with the board the first time around, they went back to the community and worked through a number of issues. That with the Austin Civic Association received their support. That with the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association received their support as well. We love that they've continued their commitment to the increased IDP, while 13% density requires. Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Maureen McRae from Council of Breeden's office. Council would like to go on record as being supportive of this project. The councilor appreciates the improvements that have been made to the project since the project was at the board last time, and we also appreciate the affordability included in the project.
Thank you.
I wish I had two raised hands. Did Annabelle, was that just Annabelle?
Madam Chair, Annabelle Holmes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association would like to go on record in support. We welcome the changes that he made from the previous proposal, which we did not approve, and we're very happy with the changes, the IDP. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Tony, go ahead, is that muted?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. Would like to go on record in support and echo the comments made by previous speakers. We're very pleased with the availability of the proponent to listen and to respond to the concerns of the community in this board, and we're very pleased with the changes that were made. So we'd like to go on record in support.
No additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review, and also to commend the applicant for the diversity of the unit and affordability and the changes.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, what's your pleasure?
Is Mr. Smith available? Kyle Smith, is he available?
Present, Madam Chair.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so let's go ahead with your project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologize for the difficulty, someone turned on my computer, my mic, and my system crashed, so apologize.
Okay, hold on one second, because Mr. Fortune needs to weed it into the record.
Certainly.
Or we refer to it.
It's a long thing to say, so you...
Yeah, I'm not going to go through the violations again, though.
Understood.
Been a long day. Calling BOA 117-2719-136 West Eighth Street. There's a companion case, BOA 117-2724-138 West Eighth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith with KDS Law, business address of 359 Newbury Street, Boston, Aback Bay. And let me proceed, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please tell us what you're proposing to do.
Certainly. So Madam Chair, if you recall, we were before you approximately two months ago, we have two sister projects. One is situated on 136 West Eighth Street, the other one is on 138 West Eighth Street. There is presently, and that plan right there is the best to view what we're going to be discussing, there is currently a single-family home on 138 West Eighth Street that is then encroaching onto 136 West Eighth Street. So there's a bump out there, if you see. Also, the lot line does not run perpendicular to West Eighth, and it runs off the diagonal, which then causes the entirety of the structure, not just the bump out, to be encroaching from 138 on to 136 West Eighth. So we had two prospective projects, sister projects for 136, which is a three-story building. The proposal for 138 West Eighth Street is an expansion of and rehabilitation of the existing single-family house to remove the encroaching bump out. My clients were able to put under agreement and are seeking to close on the adjacent parcel located at 134 West Eighth Street, arguably next week, for which they have sought to change their plans currently for the proposed project for 136. But we now have essentially 138, which has been kind of caught in the mix, and for which you asked for our deferral from last hearing to today's hearing. So we've been able to communicate with ISD. They've been delayed in getting back to us. We have not been able to bifurcate the plans for the subdivision. But in essence, what we need to continue to pursue seeking, and we're acting for your decision on today, is the mean for which to then bifurcate the project. We are ultimately looking to carve off a 26-foot square, square foot triangular sliver from 136 West Eighth Street, and to add that to the square footage for 138 West Eighth Street to remove the encroachment from the current single-family structure as a result of the adding on of that square footage. So we need to proceed with the subdivision of the land, and then arguably bifurcate 136 separately from 138, and to proceed with the proposed project for 138 West Eighth Street. So we have some...
Mr. Smith, is this, where is, what is the right drawing to be looking at to see where this triangular piece is? As, in context of both 136 and 138?
So Madam Chair, apologies. I also have the architect on the line, so Chris, if you know the exact slide to refer to, that'd be helpful?
Is Chris phoned in, or is he on?
I'm here, yeah. If we look at the land survey, which should be on the second page of the drawing set, you will see that the property line that divides 136 and 138 does not run, yeah, there you go. You can see that it runs at a slight angle to West Eighth Street. So what we're proposing to do is basically run the property line between 136 and 138 perpendicular to West Eighth Street, so that it runs parallel to the exterior wall of the single-family renovation.
Okay, so, okay, 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 so let's then go through the, so you propose, you're still continuing to propose the subdivision, and then you're proposing on the single-family to add a rear and third floor. So can you speak, talk that through?
Yes, Madam Chair. So the proposal is to add on a rear addition of approximately 13 by 13 square feet. To add on an additional floor on the top floor, we're proposing to have approximately 23,000, or sorry, 2,390 square feet of livable space, an FAR of 2.54, seeking to have four beds and two and a half baths, and that would be the composition, or composition of the expanded and renovated single-family structure on 138 West Eighth Street.
Is there a roof deck proposed, and is there any occupancy in the basement?
No occupancy in the basement, Madam Chair. The proposal for the a roof deck is off of the addition to the rear, which would only be two floors in height. There would be a roof deck on the top of that structure, would not be on the top of the highest point of the ultimate building. The main structure... The main structure being three stories high, the proposed rear addition is two with a roof deck on the top of that second story. So it's kind of tucked behind the building from the face of West Eighth Street on the top of the new addition.
Okay, so let's go to one thirty-six.
Well, Madam Chair, to confirm, this is the proposal that we are affirmatively seeking to defer on on the basis that we are looking to aggregate the square footage with one thirty-four West Eighth Street and have a new proposed project, which we are working on submitting to ISD once we affirmatively close on that parcel, which should occur at or about next week.
Okay, so you just need a motion on one thirty-eight. Do you want to close off one thirty-six? So you can just start from scratch with one thirty-four?
Well, Madam Chair, when we close on the parcel approximately next week, we're looking to have an informal, non-mandatory meeting with the butters to test, you know, kind of get a gauge as to their perspective of this proposed project.
Okay.
If we have issues there, we do currently have a ZBA, you know, ready plan for one thirty-six, for which we would ideally not like to cancel at this point. We will affirmatively do that once we make the determination to submit plans for one thirty-six to ISD, which we will arguably do probably early to mid of September.
Okay, so how are the plans, Ms. Barazza, on one thirty-eight?
Madam Chair, they're adequate? I do have a question for the applicant in terms of the division of the lot. For parcel one is basically a nine hundred and forty-one square foot lot, and then parcel two is thirty, thirteen hundred and thirty-nine. And according to zoning, the minimum lot is two thousand square feet. Is that right? Is that correct?
Yes, two thousand square feet and then one thousand for any additional unit. But we are proposing a single-family unit, so yes, two thousand square feet.
Right, so, so for each lot, for, if you were to subdivide it, you're, now you're short of the minimum lot requirement if you were to build a single-family house for each parcel.
We are short for either parcel regardless.
Unless you combine them, then you, then it's adequate for just one single-family house, correct?
If the parcels were aggregated, then yes, you could have existing... Yes. And I guess only to clarify, but we do have, legally, we have two separate parcels. The parcels have been under common ownership and effectively used as a single parcel by the family that sold the parcels then to my client. And there's a single-family house currently on one thirty-eight that is then encroaching onto one thirty-six, which we are trying to ameliorate that encroachment and then also be able to expand both vertically and to the rear of the existing single-family structure.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Of course.
Any other questions? Jean, did you have a question?
No.
No, any other questions from the board on one thirty-eight? So may I have a motion on one thirty-eight?
This motion is to approve the subdivision?
And the addition?
Sorry, Madam Chair, we have been getting public testimony on this floor.
Oh, yes, forgive me, yes. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. My apologies, I'm not familiar with the proposal, so I'm trying to follow along as best I can. The Mayor's Office is in support of the proposal for one thirty-eight West Eighth Street and would like to see deferral for one thirty-six West Eighth Street, which I believe is what the applicant is asking for. Thank you.
Confirmed.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just want to ask a clarification question. So is there a roof deck proposed on the second floor? And is that a three-unit building, correct?
So we're only, we're only looking to have a motion on one thirty-eight Eighth Street. And this is just for the single-family. It's for the division and the single-family home. That's it. We are anticipating, and, and it would include a rear and third floor addition and a, and a small deck. And then we're anticipating deferral on one thirty-six West Eighth Street.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Reedon's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support of the subdivision and the expansion of the single-family located at one thirty-eight West Eighth Street. Based on good faith compromise, we're working with the neighbors of the Cityside Neighborhood Association. Earlier this year, one of these, one of the conversations that happened between the Neighborhood Association and the proponent was the roof deck and the issues with the roof deck in the area. It was our understanding that there wouldn't be a roof deck included on these plans, and that's why I brought the question about the roof deck. We support the project for the expansion and the subdivision. We do not support the roof deck. So the Neighborhood Association doesn't support the roof deck either. So that's our, that's where our support is based on. We oppose the roof deck. Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Okay, given, given that information, may I have a motion for one thirty-eight?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review for one thirty-eight.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, one thirty-six West Eighth Street. The applicant is requesting a deferral on that. May I have a motion, please?
Motion is offered.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please, Mr.?
The October, October nineteenth at twelve thirty.
Okay, Mr. Room and staff, can you make sure that both projects, one thirty-four and one thirty-six come together on that day, okay? Thank you. Motion carries, good luck.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, with one thirty-four, we are potentially months before being able to present. If we do perceive a joint project, we will withdraw that from ISD. And I will present to let you know that we formally withdrew, have withdrawn.
Thank you.
All right, and Madam Chair, were you in vote of this as well? Do you have a final tally for the count?
Everybody's in support.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Call the last.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Calling the last case of the day, reconsideration. Case BOA one zero three, eight one seven eight, thirty to thirty-six Battery Mountain Street. This was to change the occupancy from commercial space to twenty-six residential units, commercial space and twenty-six executive suites. Violation of Article forty-five, section fourteen, uses condition. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago, Drago in Tuscano, the business address of eleven Beacon Street, here on behalf of my client, Saunder. We are seeking a reconsideration hearing from the board based on the board's decision back in March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We are looking first for a clarif... We believe there were four that were stated by the board, and we checked the video. But then there were two additional provisos added for the actual decision. The provisos that we believe the board added to the decision, one, to have staff on site at all times. Two, to quote their instructions on how to contact management at the building for twenty-four-hour issues. Three, file a report with the board, one year on the number of people per room and range of occupancies. And then four, relief granted to this applicant only. When we got the actual decision that was signed, there were two more provisos, no more than two occupants per unit. And six, minimum stay of four days required. So we were looking for clarification if in fact those provisos were to be added. And if they were, we would hope to be afforded an opportunity to discuss with the board the potential of a modification of those last two provisos due to the fact these are two-bedroom units, for the most part, seventeen of them, and seventy percent of our occupants are business and hospital stay. That would be a great detriment to my client. Now, thank you.
So my recollection of this is that all, all six of these provisos, provisos were the provisos that we were, we cared about, and that was responsive to the concerns of the neighborhood. And so I think the question is, you are asking us to reconsider this case? And may I?
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I thought there was a question on the occup, the, the stay I remember, the occupancy. I remember us going back and forth on it, and I thought we talked about how that is difficult to enforce. And, and I thought we weren't doing the occupancy one. That was the point of the log book, was to see if they were being overcrowded. But I don't remember a two-person occupancy one. I don't remember that.
Yeah, I re, I remember that, and I remember the four days. As, but... Let's just see. And, and Hansi, I think you sat on this too.
I did, I remember the four days too.
You were the, you were the law, you were the one who was in opposition to this. So, because I, for some reason, I remember all six, but I will rely on your, your younger memory to help me on this.
I do, I do remember the four day. I don't remember the, the two occupants. That, that seems to me too restrictive and hard to, to really enforce if that was a conversation. But I would say not the two occupants, but the four days was definitely put forward as a proviso.
Okay, may I ask the rest of the board members? Mark?
Madam Secretary, yeah, I do remember Mr. Legris, who's not on RVC, had made those motions, and I do remember the two as well.
I, I too remember those and believe that, that provisos that are there are, reflect the will of the board.
Okay, so the request to us is for a reconsideration of what we heard and of our provisos. May I have a motion whether we reconsider this or not?
I would make a motion to deny the request for reconsideration.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I oppose.
Your, your opposed, motion carries. We will not reconsider this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, we will convene. I know it's been a long day for everybody, so let's talk next week. Enjoy the rest of what's left of today. Okay, bye.
Thank you.